City Clerk, are we ready?
Yes, we are, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. So I would like to go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is a regular council meeting. Today is Tuesday, July 7th, 2020. I'd like to provide notice that the Flagstaff City Council has the ability to recess into executive session for legal advice should we so choose to do so. With that, City Manager, can you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Absolutely. It would be an honor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Can we have roll call?
Mayor Evans?
Present.
Vice Mayor Shimonie?
Present.
Councilmember Aslan? Councilmember Aslan? Councilmember McCarthy?
I'm here.
Councilmember Odegaard?
Present.
Councilmember Salas?
Present.
Councilmember Whelan?
Present.
City Attorney, can you please read our mission statement?
Sure. The mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
Thank you. With that, we're down to item number four. Item number four is public participation. City Clerk, do we have any public participation for tonight?
Not for this evening.
Okay, thank you. We're now down to item number five. Item number five are proclamations and recognitions. 5A is a recognition of Brad Hill, Water Services Director. City Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council. Good afternoon to everybody. I believe Shane Dilly might kick this off for us. Shane, are you ready? Shane, are you muted by chance? I am not hearing Shane on this. I'll go ahead and take lead on this. Stacy, did you want to jump in? I'm sorry.
I just was looking at our attendee list, and I don't see Shane connected quite yet. I will try texting him if you want to maybe start off with some thoughts.
Absolutely. I would be glad to. I do hope, and maybe this is a question for you also, Stacy, I hope that Brad Hill is with us.
Yes, I am with you.
All right. No ducking it, Brad. It's good to have you here. I know, Brad, that we just have a short while left to enjoy our time with you. Your tenure is coming to closure after many years with the city. And similar to a discussion we had about a month ago with our retiring police chief, we, these are bittersweet moments for the organization. We are so happy for you, to see you getting ready for your next chapter on your life journey. And that one is a well-deserved one, being retirement. We know that you have worked hard toward this moment. And I just want to start by thanking you on behalf of the entire organization for your good service to the community. The legacy that you are leaving behind will be felt for a long, long time. There's so many accomplishments. I don't know where I would begin to start. But we have had the opportunity to see some of those even lately with the wastewater master plan and a number of other things that you've had your signature on. So I'll start the discussion just by expressing our deep gratitude and appreciation for all that you have done. And I think that Shane now be with us, now is with us. And I think that he has a couple of comments queued up and some other things to share.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Greg, thanks for kicking us off. I really appreciate it. And Mayor and Council, you know, thank you for this opportunity to duly recognize our friend and colleague, Brad Hill. You know, it's an honor to share a few remarks tonight. Tonight does mark the very last council meeting with Brad Hill as an employee with the city. Last December, Brad officially retired and begun a six-month extension with the city contract with SmartWorks, at which point Brad fully expected to dune buggy off with, in the sunset with his sweetheart Julie. Little did Brad, or any of us for that matter, know at the time that we'd be facing COVID and an associated recession over these few interim months. To Brad's credit, though, he wanted to stay on with the city this additional time to help his team through the new fiscal year budget process. Again, in hindsight, you know, his stay was extended for this 30 days, now landing his departure later this month. But as an organization, again, in hindsight, we are extremely grateful for his generosity and this additional time we've had to have him with us. July marks a little over 12 and a half years. Brad has called our organization his home away from home. Last December, I ran through the council, with the council, a list of several accomplishments of Brad's, either as a member of our water services team or personally as a professional. So rather than read through that list, that lengthy list, again, we decided to jazz things up a bit and solicit the talent of none other than our very own Ralph Schmidt in Creative Services to portray many of these accomplishments, intertwined, of course, with a few comments from Brad's staff, into a video. Before we play the video, which is only going to be a few minutes long, let me just say, Brad, you rock. You're absolutely awesome. As a highly respected subject matter expert, over the years, Brad has been invited by government agencies, institutions of education and learning, and professional associations alike, both here in the state of Arizona and literally across the entire country, to speak on various matters, water-related topics, all the while bringing greater recognition to the City of Flagstaff for the great work we are doing here as a leader in the industry. Brad, there is no doubt, I believe in anybody's mind, that you've left an indelible mark upon this community and this organization. Thank you, and you'll be sorely missed. I'm sure that following the video presentation, Brad would like to share a few thoughts with the council, staff, and to the listening community. Once he's finished, I know that others would like to share their sentiments as well. So without further ado, let's have that video. Madam Mayor and Council, that concludes the video presentation. Brad, I hope you really liked it, and we'll turn the time over to others. Thank you.
Oh my, oh my gosh. Is this a place where I'm supposed to say a few things?
Yes, Brad.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry, my wife and my daughter and I are here, and we were just laughing like crazy over some of those references and that video. Thank you so much, Ralph, and obviously to all of my team that did that. Clearly, they know me when they put up a water buffalo or all those Star Trek references. Well, thank you. I'm not sure how to really start, you know, with this. I guess I want to say, first, I want to express that it's been an honor and a privilege to not only serve the Flagstaff community, starting way back, you know, 12 and a half years ago as our Water Resources Manager, but over the past nine-plus years as Director. Just referencing that video just shows a lot of things that what we accomplished as a team, not just myself. If it's okay, I'd like to take just a moment to make three recognitions, because I couldn't have accomplished what that video showed without their support. And first, it is you, City Council. Your support along the way with your often difficult debates and decisions that you've had to make on water policy issues have absolutely been critical to my success. Next, I need to recognize the City Manager's office, starting from Kevin Burke all the way to today with Greg, Shane, and Shannon. They had the confidence to hire me as the Water Services Director back in 2011. And candidly, I didn't even apply for the job originally. And then more subsequently, they've allowed me the freedom and the latitude to hire the great staff that makes up the Water Services Division. You know, and it's really because of the great staff that we have in the field, in our treatment plants, in our administration, that represent those boots on the ground, that provide those high-quality water services that our community comes to expect and deserve 24/7/365. And lastly, you know, there's many other folks that I could recognize, but you probably don't want me to go on and on. So I'd just like to recognize one more, and that is, I want to pay homage to our City Attorney's Office in general and to Sterling Solomon, our City Attorney. In Arizona, water and law are inextricably linked. And over my career with working with many attorneys, whether it's at the Governor's Office at the state level or down locally here in Flagstaff, I really want to recognize working with Sterling and, in fact, Michelle DeAndrea before him. Our two divisions over my tenure here have been successful at years of collaboration on multiple water law issues, truly to the benefit of the Flagstaff community. It has been a real pleasure to work with you, Sterling. In closing, I have lots of joy and some trepidations about leaving, candidly, although I know my heart is in the right thing to do. While one door closes, there's always another one that opens. And after 32 years in the water business, it is time for this chapter to close. I hope what I'm remembered most, maybe not after that video about all the Star Trek references, but I hope what I'm remembered most is not just about the accomplishments that I've done, but rather, I will be remembered for my fairness and steady leadership on water issues over this past decade. While I must admit, I never would have thought I'd be retiring in a virtual setting. To be candid, this is like completely strange to be talking to a computer and not hearing and seeing that personal interaction. But with that, Council, I want to thank you. City staff that I've had the privilege to work with over the last 12 and a half of years, I want to thank you as well, and the community that I served with loyalty and passion. And here's my virtual goodbye and the quote of a famous songwriter, musician, "What a long, strange trip it's been." Thank you very much, City of Flagstaff.
I'm going to go to the Vice Mayor and then Mr. McCarthy.
Thank you, Mayor, and Brad, thank you. I was laughing that whole video, and, you know, I just wanted to say thank you for your service. And it's been an honor to work with you and your team. And I really appreciate you sticking around and helping us out for the past few months. And yeah, I wish you well, and I wish we were in person. But best of luck with everything and enjoy your time, my friend. Enjoy the new adventures and the new doors that you're going to walk through. I'm sure, I'm sure you will.
Mr. McCarthy?
Well, thank you. Brad, as you remember, I'm sure, that you and I have worked together for about 10 years now, back when I was on the Water Commission, about a decade ago. So I just want to point out that you've always been professional, you're totally competent. And not that it matters, you are really friendly and easy to work with and always answered those little trivial questions I sent towards you. So I'll just remember that water is water is water. So good luck to you, man.
Mr. Aslan?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much, Brad, for all of your years of service. I can only, I wonder if you've been able to count up how many different councils you've worked with over that time period, both as Director and in other positions. I'm sure it's many, and just being here at the very tip of the iceberg to see what you've, how you've led this organization and how much you're going to be missed during this transitional phase is really something. And, you know, I know I've, to use a water reference, at times I've, myself and I'm sure others on Council can be an albatross for you. You have been nothing but exemplary in your professionalism and your patience and your steady hand at the tiller, moving a rocky bunch of seven unhurtable cats around, cycle after cycle after cycle. And that leadership really shows, and it's going to be hard to replace you for sure. And, you know, I just wanted to say too, I feel bad for you that you don't have more of a send-off, a non-virtual, in-person send-off. It would have been fun to do the Vulcan hand signal with you and wear a crazy tie to your retirement party. And hopefully, we'll still be able to see each other around town and have those conversations and, you know, continue that friendship. So as you sail off into the sunset, I just want to wish you well. Many, many more decades of not having to deal with crazy folks like your councils, and enjoy that retirement.
Ms. Whelan?
Thank you, Mayor. And I just wanted to say thank you so much, Brad, for being a teacher and a mentor and just very willing to help with this overall picture of what is going on in our world with water that I was so lucky to be able to listen to and understand. So I wish you well. I wish your family well. And yeah, take good care, and thank you for all your service.
Mr. Odegaard?
I just wanted to say thank you, Brad, and your service to the community of Flagstaff. It's much appreciated. I began in my service to the community when I started with the Water Commission, and of course, you were there and provided so much knowledge and facts in your service to the community concerning water. So it's very much appreciated. So thank you, Brad, very much, and wish you well.
Ms. Salas?
Thank you, Brad. I have always admired your exemplary and unparalleled leadership when it comes to water stewardship. I have learned a lot from you and your team in the last year and a half that I have served on the council. And you are one of the giants on which we as council stands on. So we stand on the shoulders of giants. And I wish you all the very best, happy trails, and cheers to limitless positive possibilities as you embark on the new chapter of your life. Good luck, Brad, and please don't be a stranger. Come visit us.
And Brad, Mr. Hill, I wanted to just echo the sentiments of Council. I've had the opportunity to work with you since 2008 in your various capacities. Your leadership and mentorship of myself, your staff, as well as our city, members of our city, have been paramount. And I can say that truly what I know about water, I learned from you, our very own water buffalo here at the City of Flagstaff. I can tell you that I feel that our future water supply and the efforts and the initiatives that we are engaged in currently are because of your leadership. And I feel that our city is in very good hands moving forward into the future because of your leadership and because of your work here at the city. And I wish you the best of luck and Godspeed on your next adventure.
Mr. Sterling? Mr. Solomon?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And Brad, thank you for those kind words. Truly heartfelt. I really enjoy the relationship that we've been able to build between the Water Services Division and the City Attorney's Office over the last decade, really. I really, I guess it can't be overstated. Brad's expertise and influence really cannot be overstated on what Flagstaff water is today. Now, all water. You've made it easy to tackle very difficult and complex issues, both inside and outside of litigation. And a couple of the words that I've heard here are exemplary, unparalleled, beyond competent. I would add tenacious and very patient when it comes to some difficult things that we've had to wait on. So thank you from fellow Deadhead, what a long, strange trip it truly has been. And I will always remember you exactly as you wish. Fairness and steady leadership are your hallmark.
So I'm going to turn this back over to Mr. Dilly.
Mayor and Council, that concludes the recognition for Brad this evening. I know that City Manager Clifton has mentioned that we are hoping that at some juncture in the near future, we're able to do something in person for both Chief Tredway and Mr. Hill. So stay tuned. But for tonight, this concludes that presentation.
Madam Mayor, may I wrap up on my end here? I want to thank Shane for a nice and rather creative presentation. Shane, I know you spent some time with this one, so thank you, and thanks to all who put that together. It was a nice array of comments and a funny little video, and I think very fitting. I just want to echo what Shane mentioned. I shared comments at the front end, so pardon me for being a little bit consuming with my airtime here. But I do want to echo Shane's comments. It's very much our intention, when we're over this crazy, crazy pandemic and we're able to once again find ourselves in the same room together, it's very much our intention to circle back and have a face-to-face send-off to the best we can pull that together for those who are leaving us during these virtual times. It's not entirely the way we want to do things. We've been compromising on so many levels. I go back to the high school parade, done by the vehicular parade and a number of other things where we've had to get creative in doing things remotely. On this one, I do hope, and it's going to be our intention, to put it together, to circle back and have a little more of a personal interaction with those who are leaving us during this times. Brad, congratulations to you, and thank you so much for all that you have done.
Thank you so much. With that, we're going to move down our agenda. We're going to go to item number six. Item number six is appointments. We have two sets of appointments to make today. The first one is for Planning and Zoning Commission. We are to make, staff recommended actions that we make one appointment to a term expiring December 2022. I believe this goes to Councilmember Aslan.
Thank you, Mayor, and I do have a recommendation. Just pulling up my notes real quickly here. So, yes, I would like to make a nomination for a term expiring in 2022 to P. Lloyd Paul.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion made by Mr. Aslan, a second by Ms. Whelan, to appoint P. Lloyd Paul to a term expiring December 2022, 2020-22 for the Planning and Zoning Commission. Is there any further discussion?
Mayor, I just wanted to add that I'm looking forward to seeing this vote go through. And Mr. Paul is an architect. He comes into the City of Flagstaff with many years of experience as a commissioner in other communities. And I think that cross-pollination is going to serve Planning and Zoning well. And I am hopeful that he will serve the city well in that capacity. Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. We are now down to item number B. This would be consideration of appointments to the Tourism Commission. Staffs recommend actions that we make three appointments to terms expiring January 2023. We are going to go to Mr. Odegaard first. Mr. Odegaard?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make the nomination to appoint Linda Fleischer to a term expiring on January 2023.
I gladly second that. Salas?
There's been a motion made by Mr. Odegaard and a second by Ms. Salas to appoint Linda Fleischer to a term expiring January 2023 to the Tourism Commission. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion passes. Next up would be Councilmember Whelan.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to nominate Jennifer Grogan.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. McCarthy.
There has been a motion made by Ms. Whelan with a second by Mr. McCarthy to appoint Jennifer Grogan to the Tourism Commission. This would be for a term expiring in January 2023. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion does carry. Thank you. Mr. McCarthy?
Aye, thank you, Mayor. I would like to nominate Joe O'Donnell to the Tourism Commission for a term expiring in January of 2023.
Is there a second?
Yes, a second.
So I'm going to take Ms. Salas. There's been a motion made by Mr. McCarthy with a second by Ms. Salas to appoint Joe O'Donnell, current Commissioner, to reappoint him to the Tourism Commission to a term expiring in January 2023. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion does carry. Thank you. We're now down to item number seven. That motion does carry, thank you, we're now down to item number seven. Item number seven is our liquor license public hearings, we have two such hearings tonight. The first would be um action on a liquor ice license for Safeway on Cedar Avenue, it's a series nine S sampling privileges. The second would be a license transfer, a series uh zero-six for the South Side Tavern. I'd like to go ahead and open the public hearing uh for both of these items.
Good afternoon Mayor and Council, my name is Ryan Turley and I'm a Sergeant with the Flagstaff Police Department. I'm here today to answer any questions you may have on the both liquor license, but I think both applicants are present as well.
Counsel, do you have any questions of our officer? Okay, not seeing any questions for our officer, do you have any questions for the applicants?
Uh Mayor, this is Councilmember Odegaard.
Okay, which applicant would you like to speak with, Mr. Odegaard?
Actually, I was just gonna talk to both of them and tell them uh thank you to both for. Uh coming to our Zoom meeting in case we did have any questions. Um it's very much appreciated that they take the time to do that of showing up, so thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, not seeing any questions for the applicants or the officer, I'd like to go ahead and close the public hearing for both of these items. Counsel, are there a recommendation? I'm looking for a recommendation, Counsel, uh Ms. Salas.
Yeah, yeah, Madam Mayor, I I uh. Moved to forward both application to the state with a recommendation for approval.
Is there a second?
A nice second to that, Ms. Charlie.
There's been a motion made by Ms. Salas and a second by Mr. Odegaard. To forward both of these liquor license applications to the state with a recommendation for approval, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Hi.
Any opposed? That motion does carry, thank you, we're now down to item number eight, item number eight is our consent agenda. Um is there a motion to approve our consent agenda as written?
So moved.
There's been a motion made by Ms. Whelan with a second by Mr. McCarthy to approve our consent agenda as written, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? That motion does carry, thank you Counsel, we're now down to item number nine, this is our routine items. Item number nine A is consideration approval of a preliminary plat, Ponderosa Parkway LLC. Request a preliminary plat approval for Ponderosa Parkway condominium. This is a hundred and sixty-nine unit residential condominium subdivision. At sixteen fifty East Ponderosa Parkway on eleven point nine seven acres. In the HR High Density Residential Zone, staffs recommend action. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommends by a five-zero vote on our June tenth two thousand and twenty mi- uh meeting, at their June tenth. Two thousand and twenty meeting, that the city council approved the preliminary plat. Ms. Pear Tree.
Good afternoon, uh members of the council, Mayor and Vice Mayor, my name is Genevieve Pear Tree, Planning Development Manager in the current planning section of the city of Flagstaff. I'm here to present the preliminary plat approval request for Ponderosa Parkway condominiums, and I'm assuming you can see my PowerPoint?
Yes, we can.
Great. Okay, so brief overview of this request, it is from Ponderosa Parkway LLC for preliminary plat approval for a hundred and sixty-nine unit residential condominium subdivision. On approximately twelve acres at sixteen fifty East Ponderosa Parkway, and it is in the HR High Density Residential Zone. The condominium plat creates individually owned units, so it creates the ability for ownership of the airspace within each unit. Plus the limited common elements associated with each unit, which in this case is porches and decks. So this project is located in central Flagstaff, just north of Route sixty-six and just east of Ponderosa Parkway. A little bit of background on the development, again, it's a hundred and sixty-nine units, they are distributed across thirteen three-story buildings, so there are thirteen units per building. Uh if this looks familiar, it's because council approved a large-scale zoning map amendment for this site in September twenty nineteen. Uh changing the zoning from RR Rural Residential to HR High Density Residential. Uh prior to that, staff had approved the site plan in May twenty nineteen. And staff approved this preliminary plat application in May twenty twenty. And the engineering plans are approved in June twenty twenty and other permits are currently under review. Um and this site consists of studio, one, two, and three-bedroom units. So here is an overview of the plat, it shows the location of the thirteen buildings as well as the driveways and the areas around the buildings. Uh here are the floor plans for each floor, so again, there are three stories, uh each floor has uh four or five units. And this plat shows the vertical and horizontal boundaries of each unit. Which is basically the the airspace ownership that this plat is creating. Um in addition to the limited common elements associated with each unit, which again are porches and decks. And for your reference, this is what the buildings will look like, uh this is one of the building uh building types, uh this is another one. Uh that's that's a split level to work with existing grade, and these were approved at site plan back in May twenty nineteen. So the required findings for plats, there are three, the first one is that it meets any zoning code standards, so that is Title ten of the City of Flagstaff Code. So it meets the HR High Density Residential Zone standards, including density, height, setbacks, et cetera. Uh also meets requirements for circulation and parking, so it's providing more than the minimum required parking spaces. Um it's also providing new pedestrian paths and bike ways on the interior of the site as well as along Ponderosa Parkway. Um the landscaping requirements are met through existing and new plantings. The open and civic space uh requirements, the applicant is providing more than what is required in the zoning code. Um for heritage preservation, the letter report found no architectural or historic resources, so it's meeting requirements there. And for resource protection, it's also meeting more than the minimum amount of trees as well as steep slope areas. Uh the second finding for preliminary plat approval is that it meets engineering standards, that's Title thirteen of City of Flagstaff Code. So as part of the site plan approval, the applicant was required to do three analyses. The first one was the traffic impact analysis. And as a result, the project will be providing a right turn lane for the middle driveway, so there's three driveways in the analysis, identified the need for that right turn lane. So we will be providing that. The second uh analysis is the water sewer impact analysis. And it identified the need for a new twelve-inch water main as well as a new twelve-inch sewer main. Across the front edge on Ponderosa Parkway that will tie into existing infrastructure on the south, so the project will be providing those. And then the third analysis was the drainage impact analysis. Which identified the need for four low-impact development basins to capture meter-out stormwater, the project will also be providing that. So the third finding for approval is that it meets the subdivision regulations, which is uh Title eleven of City Code. So staff approved this plat in May twenty twenty because it met all their procedures and application requirements. It also meets the minute the subdivision standards and regulations in the minimum required subdivision improvements. Those were identified in those impact analyses that I discussed on the previous slide, so that's how this plat is meeting that requirement. So in summary, uh staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission have found the preliminary plat meets the requirements of City Code Title ten, which is the Flagstaff zoning code. City Code Title eleven, which is general plans and subdivisions. And City Code Title thirteen, which is the engineering design standards and specifications. So staff recommends, based on the required findings and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation of approval, which is a five-zero vote in favor of approval. That city council approved their preliminary plat. That's all I have for my presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions and the applicant is here as well, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Whelan.
No, Mayor, I didn't have any questions, that was um. Another agenda item, I was just slow to the C.
I apologize for that, Ms. Whelan. I'm gonna go to the Vice Mayor followed by Mr. McCarthy.
Thank you Mayor and thank you for the presentation, Genevieve. Um couple of questions, can you just remind me, um I believe this project was planning to build um indoor bicycle parking, is that correct?
Um the applicant is available, Jack, do you want to answer that question, you're more familiar with that than I am. I know they're providing at least five percent uh bike parking, uh they're meeting the zoning code requirement for that, but. Jack, are you available to provide more information on that? Alright, um.
Maybe muted.
Jack, are you muted?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, we can.
Hi, Jack.
How's it going Vice Mayor, Simone, um just following up on the um on the. September twenty nineteen Large-Scale Zoning Map Amendment and your comments regarding uh covered bike parking spaces. Um we are going to build a structure in each phase, so three total structures of covered bike parking spaces. As discussed, it will be a metal structure um covering uh bikes from the elements, but it will be open on the sides. Um and it will have lockable bike parking spaces. Um and and there'll be a total of three of those, but they'll be just uh similar to what we've done at at uh. Uh like Presidio uh in the Pine subdivision on the west side of town, um there's kind of a covered structure there. Um in one of the community centers, so it'll be similar to that.
Great, thank you, Jack.
We did, we did put that on the civil plans and those were approved earlier this summer. Um and that was per your comments and requests uh in September twenty nineteen.
I really appreciate that, um could, talk to me about the EV parking plan?
Yes, sir, uh we will uh provide uh EV pre-wires per your guys' code uh and amendments to the building. Uh two uh two thousand and eighteen IBC uh building codes, uh which I believe this project has required a total of four EV parking spaces. Uh we did put those on our civil plans as well. Um our next steps would be to uh we're gonna try to reach out to APS and a couple of other. Um couple of other entities to see if we can get some grants to to get those installed in the front end, because those are. Um it it's great for the community to have extra EV spaces. Um and uh it'd be a great selling point for us as as a condominium project, so. Um that is our goal, is to to work with um to work with uh some entities to hopefully get some. Some charging stations set up and ready, because the code just requires pre-wires, which is a NEMA fourteen fifty. Outlet uh that is pre-wired at at the designated space. Uh and then those those do go back to the building sub panels um paid by the HOA.
Okay, and then lastly, Jack, can you just tell me really quick off the top of your head what the room breakdown is?
Uh half of the of the uh units are um two bedrooms. Um and then about three units um per building are three bedrooms. Um in the west, the rest are one bedrooms. Um and so three times thirteen, you got about forty units are three bedrooms uh to half. Um and one seventy, or one sixty-nine divided by two is about eighty-four units are two bedrooms. Um and the remainders are one.
Wow, that's great, I, it's refreshing, I really appreciate that, um thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. McCarthy?
Well, thank you Mayor, uh I just want to point out that uh this is the kind of project we need. Um it's close to transportation corridors, it's uh reasonably priced housing for families. And adults, but it's exactly what we need, so I'm very supportive of this project, thank you.
Okay, any other comments from Counsel? Is there a motion?
Hey, this is Jim McCarthy, may I?
I see Ms. Salas.
I'm sorry.
Uh thank you, Madam Mayor, uh. I moved to approve the preliminary plat for um Ponderosa Parkway.
Mr. McCarthy?
Second.
There's been a motion made by Ms. Salas and a second by Mr. McCarthy to approve this preliminary plat for Ponderosa Parkway LLC. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries, thank you. We're now down to nine B. Ms. Whelan?
Thank you Mayor, uh I'd just like a pointed clarification here. Would you like us to type in whether we have a motion or a second? Or can we just flow with the pace of the meeting, what would you prefer, please?
Um well, you guys seem to be flowing with the pace of the meeting, so I take who I hear. Um and I make that the either the main motion or the second.
Okay.
I ask that if you have comments and uh questions, because it seems like those are being more thought out. Um that we have time to put those um indicate that in the in the chat box. Um but when it comes to motions and um. And seconds, it seems as if most of you just kind of fly out there. Ms. Salas is the only one that actually puts in that she has um she would like to make a motion.
Thank you, Mayor.
So we're on to nine B, this is a consideration approval of a contract. This is a professional architectural design services contract for the airport's snow removal equipment building. The amount of eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Staffs recommend actions that we approve this contract with APMI Inc. For the programming and design phase services in the amount of eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven. Dollars with a contract time of three hundred and sixty-five calendar days, and that we authorize the city manager to execute the necessary documents. Is there a presentation?
Madam Mayor, this is Adam Yali uh with City Flagstaff Public Works, Counsel, good evening or good afternoon, I should say. Uh thank you for taking the time and considering this professional contract, um I'd like to kind of just give a little bit of a background on this particular project. This project uh has been identified uh in the airport's capital improvements master plan. As well as their CIP plan with the FAA. When we went, when we as a city went out and put the solicitation following our procurement rules. We also, in concert with the FAA, shared all of our information with them and they provided feedback, so they were with us quite a bit. As far as the selection is concerned. We did meet uh with APMI to discuss scoping so we could come up with a fee agreement and per the FAA requirements. We also uh solicited some work with another contractor to give us an independent fee estimate as well. So we have um reviewed both of those documents, we made our recommendation to the FAA. The FAA uh also agreed that uh they agreed that this particular contract looked good and the pricing was fair. The independent fee estimate and APMI's fee estimate was within seven and a half percent of each other. With APMI being lower, so. Um we feel very comfortable where we are. And just to kind of um highlight a little bit, this particular project is for programming and design phase services only. At this point in time, um we are estimating that the total bill will be approximately eight million dollars, depending on the size of the structure. And the FAA has reviewed that and concurs with our estimate as well, so. If there are any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Counsel, are there any questions? I see Ms. Whelan.
Thank you Mayor, thank you Counsel, Adam, I do have a few questions. Um this contract is for the design, correct?
Councilmember Whelan, you are correct, ma'am.
And and so, you know, not being um. In the construction business, not being in the design business. Um if we're talking about a nine million dollar project. Um we're close to nine hundred thousand dollars, well, really. For for the design and and I'm just. I just don't understand why it is so expensive for thirty thousand. Possibly a thirty thousand square foot building to store snow removal equipment. Um what is so special about the design of this building?
Uh Councilmember Whelan, uh Mayor, Counsel, uh fabulous question, uh we are right around the ten percent mark. Um and with a project of this size and the scope and the complexity of it. Uh my estimate, when we were working with the FAA uh years ago, uh trying to figure out what we thought the grant request would be. Uh we actually factored in between twelve and fifteen percent, um so we are actually below what the FAA had approved. So we are actually below what the FAA had approved us to move forward with. In short, there's a lot of process that goes in with this particular type of structure. The programming is quite involved and not only that, but also the complexity for which this particular, this particular structure is going to be located at the airport. There are a lot of FAA specifications and guidelines that we need to make sure we're checking those boxes. So like I said, I believe we are below what we are estimating. So I think it's, my personal opinion is it's a fair price, ma'am.
So does this firm specialize in FAA building types on airport properties?
Councilmember Whelan, Mayor Council, as part of their solicitation or their statement of qualifications, they did identify several airport projects they have done. They have a background with municipal type facilities and as, as a side note, they also worked on the Corps Services Project, the Public Works Project as well. And they were the highest scored design consultant through the statement of qualifications through procurement as well.
So just one follow-up. What I heard you saying was it's really not the design of the building, but it's the processes and the programming that is complex and that is why we're paying 10% for a design?
In short, excuse me, Councilmember Whelan, Mayor Council, in, in a roundabout and short way, I would say yes. But the design for this particular facility is, is going to be somewhat complex. We, we do have lead qualifications that we are going to be going after. So it will be a very specialized facility moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor, and hi, Adam. Thanks for the presentation or the conversation on this topic. Yeah, my, my comments and questions were along the same lines. You know, I did see that there were six interested bids that were generated by this request for proposals and I guess, yeah, just that 10% number just kind of threw me off a little bit, but I think you answered my questions and I appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Solis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I just want to mention that this is 100% funded by a grant for, from the US Department of Transportation, Federal Aviation Administration. If you recall, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Whelan and I visited and lobbied for, for this project in March 2019. And with that, I also expressed gratitude to our, our grants team and our airports team for continuously following up with this grant application. And thankfully, we got the grant from the FAA. So, you know, we, our airport need this, this, this building, which we have, you know, when we visited the FAA, you know, telling them the story of Flagstaff, that it snows in Flagstaff compared to the airport in Phoenix. So with that, I am ready to make the motion when, once the questions of our, my colleagues have been answered. Thank you.
We have Mr. McCarthy followed by Ms. Whelan.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I guess my comments or questions are a follow-up to Ms. Whelan's comments. I am under the impression, and I may be wrong, that this building, which is no doubt needed, is basically a big garage with maybe a few office buildings on the side and a couple bathrooms or something. And it seems like it's actually a pretty simple design and which would make me think that the architectural effort would be certainly less than almost a million dollars. So I guess I'll ask that question. What makes this so complicated? It's, it's a fancy garage, or am I wrong?
Councilmember McCarthy, Mayor, Councilmembers, thank you for the question. I appreciate that, Mr. McCarthy. I, I am not envisioning this particular structure to be kind of like a garage, if you will. There are, are going to be some needs for garage-specific type amenities. For example, the art vehicles, in order to get our, our fleet department to work on that, they have to come out there and a lot of times bring portable lifts. One of the items that we have identified with the FAA is to make sure we've got the appropriate lifts so routine maintenance on the various pieces of equipment out at the airport can be done. So I, I do not envision like a steel structure and with steel prices just back of the napkin calculation, it's starting to look more and more like this may actually be a block-type structure as opposed to a steel. We'll have to go through the programming exercise and figure that out. I would also like to mention that as part of this particular contract, the design consultants are going to be required to follow all of the documentations and, and all of their procedural procedures as well. So it's not just a, we're not going to just call a local steel company and this is what it's going to look like. There's a lot of paperwork and justifications and re-justifications that are going to be associated with this particular project. And Stacy, I believe, is also available if there's any additional questions regarding the grant itself.
So in all those, well, you answered most of it. All of those, that paperwork that you're talking about, that'll be done by the architectural firm as part of their assignment?
Correct.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Ms. Whelan?
Thank you, Councilmember Solis, for reminding me that that's, I remember the table that we were sitting at when we had this discussion. And it's true, this is a celebratory thing that, that the airport has gotten and, and kudos absolutely to our, our team out there. I believe that, that close to $100,000 of this is part of the CARES grant. Is that correct?
Councilmember Whelan, I'm going to ask that Stacy BK, go ahead and jump in on that, and she's the architect, pardon the pun, of getting this grant. Stacy?
Hi, Councilmember Whelan and Mayor and Council members. Stacy Breckler-Nags, Grants and Contracts Manager. And thank you, Councilmember Solis and, and Councilmember Whelan, remembering that visit with FAA. We have been pushing for a long time to get this. This grant is through the Airport Improvement Program, so it does not involve any CARES grant funds. It's separate from that. And then just another point is that all this equipment that we have been buying over the years, expensive snow removal equipment, per FAA requirements, it's required to be protected and stored in a facility. We are at maximum capacity with our equipment and so that is why the need to get this under design and get the construction dollars, which will be in itself another effort with our lobbyists and with your help to get the 8 million.
No problems, Stacy.
I appreciate your, all your council members' help in pushing to get that funding because our entitlement right now is a million dollars and so we will need 7 million plus in discretionary funds. So it'll be competitive just to, to get the construction side of it done. So we appreciate all your help.
Mr. Aslan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, hey, everyone. I don't really know where I'm going with this, but I, I feel that we need to create some space for discussion around the future use of this building. I don't know if you guys have noticed lately, but our snowy winters have be, been getting less and less snowy and for less and less length of time. I'm curious about a point in time 10 years from now when we don't even have a winter or there's maybe one snowstorm that needs equipment used on it in order to clear the tarmac. I need to make sure that this building that we're commissioning is, is going to be repurposable down the road when the need for snow removal is greatly reduced on account of climate change.
Can we perhaps have Barney speak to snow removal with regards to this, to the airport? Is he available?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, Heidi Hansen, Economic Vitality Director. I am looking to see if Barney's having trouble getting on. Just a second.
You know, I don't want to speak for the airport necessarily because definitely I don't know all about the operations there. And you know, and I do want to say that that is a good point to point out that it is snowing less now than it was before. But the fact of the matter is, is that it's still snowing and we are legally required to clean the tarmac. We're also required to de-ice planes and other such things. And so while we know in the future, perhaps, whether that be 10 years, 20 years, 30 years down the road, that we're not going to need this equipment, the fact is right now, we do need it. Whether or not we use it once a year, twice a year, or every day during the winter season, we still are required to have a place to put this. You know, when we have to have the conversation about what to do with the building, once we have sold the, the snow removal equipment, then I think we could have that conversation. But I'm not sure that it's necessarily relevant at this particular point to spend a lot of time talking about what's going to happen when we don't need it.
Well, Mayor, I think largely this ship has already sailed and I, I'm, I'm not trying to throw a wrench in the machine here. I do think it's an important consideration to raise. I think it's one we should be raising all the time with any one of these brick and mortar projects, is how do we repurpose these buildings down the road? When we know that the trajectory shows that, you know, especially, well, I'll just keep it general, the past is no longer a predictor of the future thanks to climate change when it comes to weather patterns, precipitation levels, snowpack, and the ways that we've been using equipment and buildings in the past. And acknowledging that versatility towards the future while acknowledging our needs for the present is something we should be getting in the habit of doing for every one of these projects.
So we have Ms. Hanson.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, Heidi Hansen. I apologize, Barney Halmick is delayed. We do have, I know that the winter seasons are changing, but I will say that when we do have our snowfall, we do have quite a bit of accumulation. And the difference between a regular clean of the streets and the runway is it has to be done multiple times. It is much easier when we have somewhere to put our snow vehicles so that we don't have to continue to have the staff take the time to clean them off and to get them de-iced and ready to go again. We have to continually do the runway so that our flights will come in and out. If our runway is not prepared, they will cancel flights. And we've experienced that in the past and this is why Stacy Breckler-Nags has worked with our team for so long, actually even before I even became the Economic Vitality Director, to try to get this, not only the snow equipment, but to get the building so that we can preserve everything for our future.
That's a very fair point, Heidi, and thank you for adding to the discussion. Again, I, I'm not challenging the, the current needs that we're facing. I just think that, you know, if we're spending, where is it? $859,000 on the design of a building, there should be a contingency, a contingent of that, that is focused on building's ability to be repurposed down the road should that need or desire arise.
Councilmember Aslan, I do believe that we would be able to, to repurpose this building and I will definitely make sure that when I'm speaking with staff, including Adam and Stacy, that we look into how that could be done and that at a later date, we could always be sharing those future plans with the Council. We actually come before you once a year to talk about the airport master plan that was already put together for the airport and how we are working toward that plan, which is a 20-year plan, as well as the sustainability airport master plan that we come before you, which we did at the recent budget retreat. And so we'll include that type of discussion in those work sessions when we come before you on those other plans.
That would be wonderful. Thank you. And I don't think I could possibly ask for anything beyond that, you know? And this, this, this whole concept sort of popped into my head during the conversation we're having. It's popped into my head before, but this is a reminder even just to myself that during this kind of procurement procedure, we should be, we should be asking these questions as a general rule of thumb. That's all. Thank you, Mayor. And thank you.
Is there a motion?
Madam Mayor, this is Councilmember Solis.
Yes, Ms. Solis.
Yeah. Thank you so much for the discussion. I am gladly making a motion to approve the professional architectural design services contract with APMI.
Is there a second?
This is Charlie, second.
There's been a motion made by Ms. Solis and a second by Mr. Odegaard to approve this design services contract with APMI for $859,977 and to provide the city manager with the ability to execute the necessary documents. Is there a second?
Charlie already seconded.
I'm sorry.
Is there any further discussion? My apologies. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. We're now down to 9C. This is a consideration and adoption of ordinance number 2020-16. This is an ordinance that's levying upon the assessed valuation of property within the city of Flagstaff. This has to do with our property, our primary and secondary property tax levies for fiscal year 2020, 2021. Staff's recommended action is that we read ordinance number 2020-16 by title only for the final time and then adopt.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Brandy Suda, the city's Finance Director. I do not have a presentation tonight, but I'm available for any questions you might have.
Mr. Odegaard?
Yeah. I move to read ordinance number 2020-16 by title only for the final time.
Is there a second?
Second, Chair McCarthy.
There's been a motion made by Mr. Odegaard with a second by Mr. McCarthy to read ordinance number 2020-16 by title only for the final time. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you.
An ordinance levying upon the assessed valuation of the property within the city of Flagstaff, Arizona, subject to taxation a certain sum upon each $100 of valuation, sufficient to raise the amount estimated to be required in the annual budget, less the amount estimated to be received from other sources of revenue, providing funds for various bond redemptions, for the purpose of paying interest upon bonded indebtedness, and providing funds for general municipal expenses, all for the fiscal year ending the 30th day of June 2020.
Is there a motion to adopt ordinance number 2020-16?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion made by Ms. Whelan and a second by Mr. McCarthy to adopt ordinance number 2020-16. number 2020-16. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries, thank you. We're now down to item number 9D. This is a consideration adoption of ordinance number 2020-18. This is an ordinance amending the Flagstaff City Code Title IX Traffic, Chapter 9-05, Bicycles. Staff's recommended action is that we read ordinance number 2020-18 by title only for the final time and then adopt.
Good afternoon again, Mayor, Council. This is Sterling. I just wanted to remind you, as mentioned previously, this is merely a formality to properly reflect what council already named as the specific paths where electronic bikes or electric bikes, excuse me, are prohibited. Recommend last reading and approval.
Mr. McCarthy? I'm going to take Ms. McCarthy first, then if you would provide the second Vice Mayor, then we can have discussion. Ms. McCarthy?
I'm sorry, I already had the motion, but I was on mute. To do it again, I move to read ordinance 2020-18 by title only for the final time.
Vice Mayor, are you going to provide the second? Okay, is there any discussion, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to make Sterling nervous, just kidding Sterling, but I just wanted to give a shout out to you, Mayor, and everybody else in our community who is riding a bicycle these days and to keep riding and stay, keep those cars off the roads. Thank you.
I did get nervous, thank you.
No, I got you.
Mayor, can I make a comment, Jim McCarthy?
Yes, Kim McCarthy.
I just want to say that there wasn't total council agreement on this and some people in the community have been down on me because I've agreed to support this compromise. It was a compromise and we designated a few trails with, where no electric motorbikes are allowed, and then we allowed them elsewhere. And that was a very good compromise. I think it's an example of how this council works together well. So I definitely support the compromise.
There's been a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries, thank you.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Flagstaff, Arizona, amending the Flagstaff City Code Title IX Traffic, Chapter 9-05, Bicycles of the Flagstaff City Code, establishing separability and establishing an effective date.
Is there a motion to adopt ordinance number 2020-18?
This is Charlie, move to adopt.
Second. There's been a motion made by Mr. Odegaard and a second by Ms. Whelan to adopt ordinance number 2020-18. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries, thank you. We're now down to item number 10. This is our regular agenda. Item number 10A is consideration and adoption of resolution number 2020-42. This is a resolution approving an amendment to the intergovernmental third-party agreement between the city of Flagstaff, Coquenino County, and Paw Placement of Northern Arizona for animal sheltering services. Staff's recommended actions that we read resolution number 2020-42 by title only and then adopt.
Mayor, Council, this is Patrick Brown. I'm the purchasing director. I don't have a presentation, but I am here to help answer any questions there may be, and I believe Walt Miller is as well. Thank you.
Council, do you have any questions on this item? Council, is there a motion?
Mayor, I move to read resolution number 2020-42 by title only.
Is there a second?
Second, Salas.
There's been a motion made by Ms. Whelan and a second by Ms. Salas to read resolution number 2020-42 by title only. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries, thank you.
A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council approving Amendment 1 to an intergovernmental agreement between Coquenino County, Paw Placement of Northern Arizona, doing business as High Country Humane, and the city of Flagstaff for animal sheltering services.
Is there a motion to adopt resolution number 2020-42?
This is Charlie, I move to adopt.
Second. There's been a motion made by Ms. Odegaard and a second by Ms. Whelan to adopt resolution number 2020-42. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries, thank you. We're now down to 10B. This is a consideration adoption of resolution number 2020-43. A resolution of Flagstaff City Council adopting a Flagstaff Automotive Sales Tax Rebate Program to further the city's climate action goals and to support local automotive dealers. Flagstaff Automotive Sales Tax Rebate Program. Who is presenting on this?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Jack Fitchett and I am the interim business attraction manager for the city of Flagstaff. Tonight I have a brief presentation that will cover the new business attraction incentives that were discussed during last week's work session. And I also wanted to thank council for your feedback last week. And you'll notice momentarily that we attempted to include some of those thoughtful suggestions you provided into the proposed policies that you'll see this evening. So with that, I'd like to bring the council's attention to a slight alteration in what staff is seeking approval for this evening. Staff is now only seeking the approval of two of these new incentives rather than the three that are on the current agenda. At this point in time, staff is no longer seeking council's approval for the business attraction development reinvestment incentive. This incentive was the policy discussed last week that would have used a portion of the unrestricted construction sales tax that would have been generated from a business's capital investment as a funding mechanism for that particular incentive. The reason staff is no longer seeking approval for this incentive is because we heard some of the concerns raised by council last Tuesday about how this policy may affect our general fund, and we wanted to be mindful of those comments. The economic development team vetted these concerns on Monday, this Monday, with the budget team and finance staff. And we have determined that at this point in time, we would like to table the adoption of this policy and so staff can fully identify the impacts that COVID-19 will have on the city's budget and give additional time so that an appropriate solution and start date can be found to implement this incentive. Staff would look to bring back this policy once we are confident these concerns can be addressed without placing an additional burden on the city's general fund.
I believe that Mr. Odegaard has a comment.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Jack. So we are not going to make a read a resolution concerning 2020-45, which is the Business Attraction and Development Reinvestment Incentive Program. So we're not going to read that tonight?
We're actually on the one about automobiles right now. It's the automobile sales tax.
Correct. Oh, so, okay, we can do one at a time, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Odegaard for the question. You are, you are correct. We are not seeking approval for that particular resolution and that was just a general starting statement. I'm about to get into the auto sales tax incentive.
Okay, so you're not talking about all of them at one time right now, Mr. Fitchett?
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay, so you are correct, Mr. Odegaard.
So can I have a follow-up?
Yes.
So I, you know, I heard those concerns also, Mr. Fitchett, but to me, those concerns were a minority. And so if I'm correct, we did have majority to move forward on all three items. And so to me, I would think I'm ready to move forward.
Can the city manager speak to this?
Mayor?
Madam Mayor and Council, Heidi, I'm sorry, I was speaking over you. Go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to, I was going to try to clarify what Jack was asking or what was, what he was saying, but if you want to go first, go by, go for it, city manager.
I'll make an attempt and you can correct me if I misstate things. There might have been uncertainty, Councilmember Odegaard and others. There might have been some uncertainty as to where that consensus from council lied last week. Sometimes we at the staff level, when we're debriefing these meetings, are pondering these outcomes. And it was, I believe, thought by staff that there was consensus lacking on this one. We may very well be mistaken in that assumption and if we are, I'm thinking out loud here, Heidi, but I'm wondering if we can go ahead and put that resolution on the table even. I don't know if Jack is prepared to present on it or not, but the resolution is before us, correct?
Correct. City manager, mayor, vice mayor, councilmembers, we can actually have you approve all the resolutions. The issue with the third one that Jack was explaining to you at the beginning is that we were, after going back to the budget review team this week after this item, we realized that we probably need to look at how this could affect the general fund and we wouldn't be able to really assess that till we get a few more months into what's happened with COVID-19. And so because of that, we aren't able to, we can have you approve something, but we're not able to really tell you how effective it will be for the business community at this time because we're waiting to see revenue numbers. So we were thinking that it might make more sense to have you approve the first two. We postponed the third one and bring that to you at another date once we see the forecasts on revenues.
I'm going to go to Mr. Clifton and then go back to Ms. Whelan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a very good and thoughtful discussion. Another option be, in addition to what Ms. Hansen just said, is we can approve all three resolutions and staff can simply tap the brakes on implementing the third one, have a little more time. I think we're at your pleasure. We can report back, that would be after the recess. We can have it approved tonight with, with the notion that we will not take action on it right away, or we can just act on the first two resolutions, whatever the council's pleasure. Thank you.
Ms. Whelan?
Thank you, Mayor. The, the two resolutions you'd like to move through are coming from BBB funds, correct?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Whelan, that is correct, yes. The first two resolutions that we are seeking approval for have already been budgeted in the FY21 budget with the BBB tax.
And, and I've got to say, while I appreciate the, the support for our automotive industry and job creation, I also see a very high need to develop new jobs, new businesses that'll provide high wage. And this was going to be 0.5% from the construction sales tax revenue, correct?
Councilmember Whelan, that's correct, yes. It would be half a percentage from the unrestricted construction sales tax that would be generated from a capital, the capital investment of that business.
So in my impression is that those funds are not taking as much of a hit as other revenue streams, is that correct?
Councilmember Whelan, I'd like to ask Mr. Tatter to jump in on that particular question if he's available.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, Rick Tatter, Management Service Director. We are going to see, or we are projecting next year that we would see a decline in those construction sales tax. Again, we need a little more time to see how revenues are coming in, but we are currently estimating based on the projections we shared with you a month or so ago, the construction sales tax may be approximately $30,000 short of what our budgeted revenues are, was approved by. Just on a side note is also, this is an unbudgeted request because we collect a full amount of our sales tax and then we have an expenditure to pay these initiatives and we don't have this budgeted in the general fund. So we are asking for an unbudgeted request for this item, should it be approved.
Well, that's good information, Rick. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, I, I would have to agree that unfortunately we would pull this since it's unbudgeted for the time being.
Mr. Odegaard?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And I'm going to go back to the car sales, for example. This incentive for the car sale will only happen if the car gets sold. I understand we have to budget and if a car gets sold, we don't know if the car gets sold. Same way with the other two items. Those incentives will only happen if something gets built. Am I mistaken when I make that comment?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Odegaard, you are not, so the development reinvestment incentive and the business attraction job creation incentive both rely on a new business, one locating to Flagstaff and meeting eligible criteria in order to qualify for that incentive. The same being with the automotive sustainable rebate that you just mentioned in that, yes, they would need to purchase the vehicle in order to qualify for the rebate. So you're, you're correct in your thinking.
So I just have to say that I was looking forward to us moving all three of these forward. I would have to agree with Councilmember Odegaard and his statement with regards to the discussion that we had last week. I do think that there was robust discussion, but I heard a majority of council say that they were interested in moving these forward with the understanding that, that staff was going to go and perhaps fine tune the last incentive a bit more. And I'm, quite frankly, I'm disappointed that it looks like we are going to be pulling these items. I think now, really, in our current economic state, looking at a recession, looking at the, the, the problems that our, that our businesses are facing, looking at the fact that we truly are looking to diversify, you know, the, the opportunities that are coming to our city with regards to jobs, I think now would be the exact time that we would do these types of incentives. Ms. Whelan?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I was, I was just pointing out, the whole idea of an incentive is to motivate people to buy these cars and do these things. And quite frankly, Mayor, I, I do agree with you and Councilmember Odegaard. I think it is time, but I think in a broader look, we need to look at how we fund our economic development again. That, that, you know, we tend to rob Paul to pay Peter when it comes to this. And right now, it is essential that we are taking action on attracting business and attracting new business and jobs. So I, it feels like a catch-22, but I do agree with, with you and Councilmember Odegaard. It's a priority. The, the thing is, I don't think we've been really looking at, we didn't know we would have this need, but it, we know now, it's important. And it's important that down the road, we really take some serious considerations about funding this appropriately. Thank you, Mayor.
So I do see that we have other comments. I guess I just want to follow up with that, Ms. Whelan, and just say this, you know, especially when we're looking at the Flagstaff Auto Sales Tax Rebate Program, we heard almost a year ago during We heard almost a year ago during our conversation with the Chamber of Commerce, directly from one of the automobile individuals here, owners here, about this issue. And about the fact that people are leaving our community and they are buying their vehicles elsewhere. And so the fact that they're doing that means that the revenue that we would have had here in the city for things such as schools, for things such as our foots trails, those types of things, we're not getting at all because they're not purchasing the car here. And so he said, this was Mr. Finley, he said at that time that they needed something, that they needed some type of help and they need something, some type of assistance. So especially with that one, we could look at it like it's robbing Peter to pay Paul, or we could look at it as that we're losing those sales right now, period. We're losing those sales. And anything we can do to help keep those sales here in town, I think would be beneficial. I'm going to go to Mr. Clifton. Then I do see Mr. Shimon. Mr. McCarthy is asking for the overall presentation. And then I see a comment by Mr. McIntyre. Mr. Clifton?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council. We have had discussion of this just a week ago and you have in your packet, I believe, the materials on all three items, if I'm looking at this correctly.
Yeah.
And I have full confidence that Jack can lead us through the presentation on all three. And I'm going to suggest to the council, in light of the discussion that has just unfolded, that we do hear the presentation on all three and give council the opportunity to decide if it wants to move forward on all three. That's at least have a little more of an informed discussion because we are deeply appreciative of the comments that are being made tonight. And the good news is, this thing is queued up for action across the board. So nothing has to come off of the table at this juncture. Thank you.
Should we move back to Mr. Fitchett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And yeah, with that, I'm happy to continue with the presentation and we'll just go in order of the resolution. So I'll move on first to the Sustainable Automotive Tax Rebate and then we will go through the next two. So staff is seeking council's approval tonight for the Sustainable Automotive Sales Tax Rebate. There were minor proposed changes made to this incentive based on council's conversation from last week's meeting. The minor alteration to this policy would be to separate these rebates as a local versus non-local rebate. You'll see on this slide that we have incorporated three additional rebates for purchasers that can illustrate they are a resident of Flagstaff. The percentage changes to these rebates were very minor to keep in the spirit with the initial design of this policy that was presented to you last week. And with that, I'd like to ask council if they are comfortable with these alterations for this specific policy.
Council? I don't see any comments. So I will continue.
Thank you, Mayor. The next is the Job Creation Incentive. Staff is seeking council's approval tonight for the Business Attraction Job Creation Incentive. There is one minor proposed change to this incentive, again, based on council's discussion last week. That alteration would be to include additional qualifying expenses to this incentive to give a qualifying business additional flexibility in how they can use these funds. The additional proposed uses, you can see listed on the bottom of this slide. Staff is looking to receive council's direction if we should include these additional expenses into this particular incentive or if we should keep the reimbursable expenses as is with the relocation expenses, job trainings and workforce development, or look to include the bottom seven bullet points as well.
Council?
Council, we're looking for direction on this. Do we want to include the other below reimbursable expenses or not? Mr. Odegaard?
Thank you, Jack. Yes, I'm fine with that. So thank you for the suggestion.
Ms. Salas?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Including the alternative expenses as articulated in those four, seven bullet will allow more flexibility and choice for businesses.
Mrs. McCarthy, can you verbalize?
Yes, Mayor, I'm fine with the new proposals that Jack just added in.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I too am okay with everything that's being, that is being outlined on the slides. Thank you.
Mr. Aslan?
Mayor, I believe last week I articulated wanting to prioritize making sure that we're incentivizing bringing high-quality jobs into Flagstaff. But these bullet points seem okay to me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And then I apologize, I do not have a slide for the Development Reinvestment Incentive. But as written, the policy would be exactly the same as you would see in the agenda packet with the proposed alteration that you're seeing on this slide, which would be to also include the additional reimbursable expenses being that we would look to include the relocation expenses, job trainings and workforce development to be used from that generated unrestricted construction sales tax. That would be the only proposed alteration to this incentive at this time if we're looking to continue to move forward with it. Thank you.
I'm going to go to Mr. Clifton first and then Mr. McCarthy.
I may have corrected my own omission, Mayor. I was not seeing the slides. I pointed that out to Jack, but now I am seeing them, so I apologize.
Mr. McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. Jack, my understanding is that the resolutions as drafted in the packet would include these new additions that you just went through. Is that correct?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember McCarthy, the resolutions as listed actually include the reimbursable expenses that you see at the top of this slide. So both of those policies, the current reimbursable expenses are the relocation, the job training and workforce development. If we were going to pass the resolution with those additional expenditures listed below on this slide, I believe that would be, that would need to be made be an amendment, but city clerk, please correct me if I'm wrong.
And then the same question for the automotive. The difference for local and non-local buyers, that's not in the as-written resolution, is it?
Councilmember McCarthy, that's correct. Yes, that would need to be an amendment as well.
Thank you, Jack. And Stacy?
Thank you.
Council? Any more thoughts, comments? Jack, do you have anything else to add?
No, I do not, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Is there a motion? Yes, Mr. McCarthy?
I would like to move that we read Resolution 2020-43 by title only and include as an amendment to that the difference in the rebates that are for local versus non-local buyers that were just presented to us in the slideshow.
Is there a second?
Second, Salas.
There's been motion made by Mr. McCarthy with a second by Ms. Salas to read Resolution Number 2020-43 by title only. Is there any additional? Mr. McIntyre?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry, I was just trying to make sure I heard correctly. I heard the amendment to include the automotive percentages. I did not hear the amendment including the additional expansion of what the reimbursable expenses could be paid towards. And I was curious, I had thought I heard that that was going to be included as well, so I thought maybe it was an omission. My apologies for clarifying.
So that would apply in the first resolution as well, would it? So therefore, I add that to the motion.
And Ms. Salas, are you okay with that?
Yes, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, thank you. That motion carries.
A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council adopting a Flagstaff Automotive Sales Tax Rebate Program to further the city's climate action goals and to support local automotive dealers as amended.
Is there a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2020-43?
This, Charlie, I move to adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion made by Mr. Odegaard and a second by Ms. Whelan to adopt Resolution Number 2020-43. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Is there a motion to read Resolution Number 2020? 2020, yeah, 2020-44 by title only?
So moved.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second, Salas.
There's been a motion made by Ms. Whelan and a second by Ms. Salas to read Resolution Number 2020-44 by title only. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you.
A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council adopting a Flagstaff Business Attraction Job Creative, excuse me, I'm sorry, a resolution of the Flagstaff City Council adopting a Flagstaff Business Attraction Job Creation Incentive Program to assist in attracting new businesses that will provide high-wage jobs in specific industry sectors.
Is there a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2020-44?
Move to adopt, Salas.
Was it Mr. Odegaard the second? Who was the second voice?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, so this is a motion made by Ms. Salas and a second by Mr. Odegaard to adopt Resolution Number 2020-44. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Mayor?
Aye.
I'm sorry. Mr. Tatter had something. I apologize.
I think I may have missed something, but I think this one needs to be amended also to include those additional areas that Jack mentioned. Am I missing that? Jack, can you confirm that?
Thank you, Rick. No, you are correct. Yeah, we would look to include those additional reimbursable expenses that would need to be amended in this policy as well.
And so, Jack, just for Ms. Salas, who made the original motion, what were those?
That would be to include the listed reimbursable expenses to include beautification improvements, code-required landscaping, dark-skinned code compliance, energy efficiency items.
Can you put that slide back up?
Yes, I apologize. Let me share my screen again.
City Attorney?
Mayor, Council, I just wanted to point out that if the person who made the motion, I believe that was you, Councilmember Salas, if you just want to indicate the additional items as amended or amend your motion to do so, and then whoever made the second amend their second as well.
Ms. Salas?
Yes, Madam Mayor, so I move to...
Yeah, actually, you can just simply state so amended as it shows on the slide on the screen.
Yeah. So amended as discussed and shown on the slide on the screen, which includes the alternative expenses.
Mr. Odegaard, are you acceptable to that in your second?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, are there any further comments?
Yes, Mayor, this is Jim McCarthy.
Mr. McCarthy?
I would just ask at the city attorney, review just what went on. For instance, I look in the packet and I find the resolution, but it refers to an amendment or attachment A. I don't see attachment A there. Maybe it's there and I just missed it. But I would ask that the city attorney review this and make sure everything we did is, you know, dot the i's, cross the t's and make sure everything was done correctly. And if not, let us know.
City Attorney?
Mayor, Council and Councilmember McCarthy, thank you. Absolutely. We will work together closely with the clerk's office and with Jack to make sure that it's all included appropriately. And if we have any questions, we'll come back to council.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Salzberg?
My apologies, Sterling covered the comments. I did also want to just confirm that all three policies are attached to the staff summary. So they're not included with the resolution themselves. It's the resolution and then the exhibit is a separate document on the staff summary. That might clear up some of that confusion.
Well, I thought that might be the case, but I just want to make sure that technically we're correct.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. We're now down to, is there a motion to read Resolution Number 2020-45 by title only as amended?
Mayor, this is Charlie, and I'd like to read Resolution Number 2020-45 by title only with option two that was shown in the packet.
Mayor, he misspoke. I think he meant to say 2020-44.
No, we're actually reading Resolution Number 2020-45. Our last, our last motion was to adopt Resolution Number 2020-44.
I stand corrected. I apologize.
So I'm looking for a second?
Second, Salas.
So there's been a motion made by Mr. Odegaard and a second by Ms. Salas to read Resolution Number 2020-45 by title only with option number two, as was shown in our packet. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you.
A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council adopting a Development Reinvestment Incentive Program to assist in attracting new businesses that will provide high-wage jobs in targeted industry sectors as amended.
Is there a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2020-45?
Move to adopt, Salas. Second.
There's been a motion made by Ms. Salas with a second by Ms. Whelan to adopt Resolution Number 2020-45. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. We're now down to 10C. This is consideration adoption of Resolution Number 2020-46. This is a resolution adopting the management plan for legally designated open space properties. Staff's recommended actions that we read Resolution Number 2020-46 by title only and then adopt. And this is Mr. Wallace.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Robert Wallace, Open Space Specialist for the city. Tonight, I'm here to provide you with a summary of the updates and revisions of the legally designated open space management plan originally adopted by city council in 2017 by resolution. For the remainder of the presentation, I'm going to refer to the management plan as the ELDOS. The ELDOS lays out the management policies and projects that are specific to the city's open space regional preserves, which include the Picture Canyon Natural and Cultural Preserve, the McMillan Mesa Natural Area, the Observatory Mesa Natural Area. And it also defines the management policies for complementary open space, the Schultz Creek Trailhead and Natural Area and open space connectors. and open space connectors. In this update, the re- and request for adoption of the newly revised plan, I'm going to provide the council with some background on the purpose of the plan, provide you with some brief update on the chapter's management goals, review the plan's organization, and explain what revisions were made. Before we review the management plan, I'd like to share some of the milestones of the open space program's background and how it was developed. The, uh, property that was first protected as open space, uh, was Picture Canyon in 2012 and then Observatory Mesa in 2013. Both of these parcels were purchased with voter-approved bond funds and also twelve million dollars in grant funding from the Preserve Arizona Initiative. Uh, as a reminder, these two parcels have conservation easements, which are held by the Arizona State Parks, and the easements, uh, held by the city do restrict the use of the property in our condition of the twelve million dollars received in grant funding. Additional lands added to the open space inventory do include the Schultz Creek Trailhead and Natural Area and the McMillan Mesa Natural Area. The, uh, plan before you this evening was refined from the original document, uh, that was adopted in 2017 and includes a general management policies chapter rather than repetitive policies listed in each chapter. The, uh, purpose, the plan's purpose, is to identify management goals, policies, and improvement projects that ensures proper and effective management, provides a strategy for management, provides a framework for decision-making, and, um, overall just allows us to oversee the property. And I just want to, uh, comment that it's not a strategic plan. It is a management plan. The management plan lays out five goals for our open space property of the city. Uh, the first being to maintain, restore, and enhance the natural habitat of our, uh, open space. So the restoration work completed at Picture Canyon is a really great example of this goal being held up. When the property was adopted as open space, the entire length of the Rio de Fláter once the preserve was returned to its native channel, uh, taking extensive efforts from both, both partners and natural channel design experts. Uh, goal two is to protect the past and present cultural resources. This is really important for Picture Canyon Preserve as well, which has a hundred and twenty-six petroglyph panels and twenty-nine different cultural sites. The, uh, cultural sites being listed on the Arizona State Museum, including both prehistoric and historic sites, some of which have been listed on the National Register of Historic Places, while others are eligible for listing and therefore must be protected to the, uh, same extent. Goal three is to maintain and protect diverse and healthy wildlife populations. Observatory Mesa is an important wildlife corridor known as the Woody Bridge Corridor, which connects habitat from the San Francisco Peaks to the lower elevation, um, shrubbing grassland along the Mogollon Rim. Uh, using this plan, we're able to provide comment on recent road proposals concerning the area that would have been affected, that would have affected that corridor. Uh, number four there is to provide opportunities for public use of these properties. McMillan Mesa is really a great example here. It's, uh, primarily surrounded by private parcels, including the Switzer Mesa, McMillan Mesa Village, Stone Ridge, Hospital Hill, Shadow Mountain, Grandview Homes, and the Sunnyside Neighborhoods. And therefore, the, uh, land preserves really important opportunities for the public in this location. And the final goal there, number five, is to maintain and develop partnerships that facilitate resource management, stewardship, and conservation. Uh, here, the open space program has been partnering with the Five Staff Trail Initiative to, to prevent illegal trail development on the Observatory Mesa Natural Area through education and empowering the public. The plan is organized into seven different chapters. The first chapter is for management and coordination. This is included from the adopted version. The general management policies, which is a new chapter in the plan. The Picture Canyon Natural and Cultural Preserve, adopted from the, uh, original version. Observatory Mesa Natural Area, also adopted from the original version. And then the McMillan Mesa Natural Area Chapter, which was presented to City Council in November of 2019. The complementary open space chapter, a new section, and the open space connectors, a new section, included to account for additions and changes in the city's open space program. As you are, uh, likely aware of the locations of our property, this map does display that Picture Canyon is on the east side and provides, um, Flagstaff residents in that location with great open space opportunities. McMillan Mesa is right downtown, just south of the Buffalo Park area. Observatory Mesa on the west side of town, and then the Schultz Creek along the Mount Elden, um, Lookout Road. Uh, Chapter One identifies the responsibilities and individuals, individuals, organizations, and agencies involved in the management of, of legally designated open space. This allows for easy identification of workforce for the management and administration of the property. Chapter Two is broken into different sections. Each section identifies a management goal, a related management policy, plan management actions, all relevant to legally designated open space. Uh, so this chapter, um, addresses natural resources, um, water, forest, grassland health, and wildlife resources, cultural and historic resources, public use including access management, recreational use, roads, easements, leases, educational research, and facility development. So, um, I thought I'd try to give you a good example about how this plan would be used. So for instance, the forest and grassland health identified, um, in this plan, the management goal for this section is for properties to be actively managed to achieve forest and grassland structures that are resilient to wildfire and resistant to other disturbances while also preserving the natural ecosystem, reducing invasive plant population, and continue to provide services to the surrounding community. So, uh, therefore, one of the planned management actions is to routinely monitor noxious invasive plant populations within these properties and utilize early detection and rapid response techniques, which include things like surveying, eradicating newly germinated weeds, uh, with herbicide treatments or, or physical control methods, and holding volunteer events to engage the community. Having these steps helps, helps the city identify and ensure that management activities are completed in accordance with legal requirements, um, including but not limited to the Arizona Conservation, Arizona State Park Conservation Easements, the, uh, Arizona Antiquities Act, applicable sections of the Flagstaff zoning code adopted by City Council, the, uh, Greater Flagstaff Community Wildfire Protection Plan adopted by City Council in, in 2004, for a few examples. The next three chapters are specific to the city's regional preserves. Picture Canyon, Observatory Mesa, and McMillan Mesa. This first one being specific for the Picture Canyon Preserve. It, uh, provides a property overview, specifics related to natural resources, cultural and historic resources, resources and public use. So a good example for this chapter would be specific recommendations related to the topics that, uh, they're seeing on the slide are addressed specifically for Chapter Three, um, in Chapter Three for Picture Canyon rather. So, um, perhaps the most significant example, um, specific to the management of Picture Canyon is its cultural resources. Um, and here, the plan lays out guidance for the management within the landmark overlay protections and requires prior approval by the Heritage Preservation Commission for any alteration or part, um, alteration of a cultural resource that is inconsistent with the applicable standards and guidelines. Each management chapter identifies a priority action plan specific to the regional preserve. Um, these have been updated to reflect the current priorities recommended by the Open Spaces Commission and the Open Space Program, and have included input from community partners such as the Five Staff Trail Initiative, the Picture Canyon Working Group, Conservation Study Forum, general, um, public surveys that we've conducted, and other partners. Management topics, uh, for Observatory Mesa include developing a trail system for the natural area, working with community partners such as the Forest Service and BOL to coordinate efforts and ensure compliance with all entities. These actions that are listed for Observatory Mesa are selected to help balance management across public use, natural resources, and cultural and historical resources as well. Uh, these are visionary actions with the purpose of guiding our open space program for as funding is secured. So I just want to be clear that the adoption of the document doesn't require the city into having in- implement these projects into Cali. Chapter Five, uh, lays out the specific guidelines for McMillan Mesa. This chapter was brought to the council in, uh, November again of 2019, so you recently, uh, see this and have seen this. And it was created with substantial public input. Uh, this next slide does lay out a few goals for the property that were just, that are also discussed in that chapter. The, uh, following two chapters were included after working with the Open Spaces Commission on creating the foundation for an integrated open space system. The, uh, two following categories, uh, were included, the, uh, complementary open space, and then the next slide, open space connectors. Complementary open space are properties generally smaller than regional preserves, which complement an open space system by protecting something like a neighbor wood, where a particular neighborhood has better access to, to nature, or protecting a, uh, view shed. The open space connectors provide links to regional preserves. Uh, both, uh, the complementary open space and open space connectors support an integrated system and allow for an interconnected access for the community. The Schultz Creek Natural Area and Trailhead is included in the complementary open space category. Their property played an important role in the history of, of Flagstaff, and the location also provides a great opportunity to partner with the foresters to provide better access for the Mount Elden Dry Lake Hills region. Uh, this further complemented integrated system through partnership. While there are currently no open space connectors, the general management goals, policies, and actions outlined in, in Chapter Two will apply when those properties are acquired. These two new sections will allow the open space program to work towards implementation of an integrated system that, uh, links city open space with partner locations of the Forest Service and County, thus really developing a system that meets the community's need while working together, uh, so efforts are supportive of one another. These sections will also allow the city to address management concerns of these properties without repetitive additions to the plan. In summary, the legally designated open space management plan lays out the management policies and, and, and projects that are specific to the city's regional preserves, which includes Picture Canyon, McMillan Mesa, and Observatory Mesa, and management policies for complementary open space, being the Schultz Creek Trailhead and Natural Area, and future open space connectors. The, uh, management plan was condensed from the original document that was adopted in 2017 by compiling repetitive information into the general management policies chapter, and it sets the management policies for the, for all open space, uh, input, and expands the plan to include community recommendations for managing open space, which includes, uh, guidelines for complementary open spaces and connectors to accommodate forward-thinking, uh, for an integrated open space system. Again, I'd like to emphasize that, that this plan, this management plan is not a strategic plan. It's a plan for maintaining, protecting, and working with the community to meet Flagstaff's needs associated with open space preservation and recreation. On June 22nd of 2020, the City of Flagstaff Open Spaces Commission unanimously voted to recommend the management plan for adoption by City Council. And that concludes my presentation. Uh, are there any questions?
Counselor? Ms. Whelan?
Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Wallace. Um, you know, this is so important and, and high on the priority list. Have you, have you thought or brainstormed funding options?
Uh, yes, we have, um, we do apply for numerous grants.
Yes.
And we actually are, are currently working, we just submitted a grant application for a cultural survey for the McMillan Mesa, which will help us manage the property more thoroughly. And we also are, are currently working through a grant that, um, allows invasive weed treatment and are in partnership with the Arboretum to treat property in the museum fire area, which would include the McMillan Mesa Natural Area. So we do seek out a number of grants. The Open Spaces Commission and the Parks and Rec, Recs Commission were also working on a bond measure that would have gone forward for this fall's, um, ballot, but due to all of the concerns that that wasn't carried forward.
Right, I, I remember that. But no, no ideas for a constant or consistent revenue stream?
We don't, yeah, we don't have any, um, great ideas at this point. But we're definitely open to any advice, for sure.
Okay. And one other question, do you consider Red Gap Ranch open space?
No, uh, we don't. Um, and that might be a topic for another discussion, but there are other properties in, in Flagstaff which I think the community does identify as open space, but it is not legally designated open space. It's just those four properties that I mentioned, the Picture Canyon, McMillan Mesa, Observatory Mesa, and the Schultz Creek Trailhead, which are the legally designated properties.
Okay. And, and is that something of interest to the commission?
Red Gap Ranch, uh, I don't know. Yeah, I think that that would have to be a, a topic of discussion, um, for the commission.
I don't want to add more to your load, and I know, uh, we have plenty of open space, but we also own that, and it is open space. So, just a thought. Thank you so much for your presentation.
You're welcome, and thanks for your questions.
Well, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. And, and Robert, I just want to say thank you for your work on this. Thank you to the commission. Thank you to the city staff and the community that's been involved in this process. Um, I don't have any questions for the plan. I, I think it looks good. Um, funding's going to be, you know, a question that we'll have to, um, work through in the future, but, um, I, I, I like the work that has been done leading up to this point. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Is there anything else for this item? Any other comments? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
There's been a motion to read resolution number 2020 dash forty-six by title only by the Vice Mayor with a second by Mr. Aslan. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff adopting the revised management plan for legally designated open space properties.
Is there a motion to adopt resolution 2020 forty-six?
Move to adopt.
Is there a second?
Second, Jim McCarthy.
There's been a motion made by, uh, Ms. Odegaard with a second by Ms. McCarthy to adopt resolution 2020 dash forty-six. Is there, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any, any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. It's now five ten. We are going to take a break until five twenty. Thank you.
Mayor, we are back online.
Thank you. We're now down to item number ten D. This is a consideration adoption of resolution number 2020 dash thirty-eight. A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council authorizing the acquisition of real property interest necessary for the Rio de Fláter flood control project of public use, providing for delegation of authority, condemnation, condemnation authority, prior approval of purchases, and establishing an effective date. Staff's recommended actions that we read resolution number 2020 dash thirty-eight by title only and then adopt. Staff? is that we read Resolution Number 2020-38 by title only and then adopt. Staff?
Good evening, Mayor. This is Dan Fulk, Community Development Director. I've got a couple of real estate items I'm going to be presenting to you this evening. I've shared my screen. So are you seeing the Rio de Flag flood control project slide?
Yes, Dan, we are.
Thank you. All right. So I'm just going to give a little background here on this item. So we are seeking authorization to get some property rights related to the Rio de Flag flood control project. This context map has shown you what areas these are located. One group of temporary work area easements is within the Clay Avenue Wash Reach. And then another one is at the end of the project in the lower Rio de Flag Reach. Here's a summary of what we're presenting to you this evening. Again, these are temporary work area easements, also known as temporary construction easements. This is the U.S. Army Corps nomenclature is a temporary work area easement. So these are rights that we need just during construction. There's no permanent improvements placed within these easements. It's a temporary right, again, just for the construction of the flood control And so those are the addresses along with the area of the easement itself. You can see most of them are quite small in terms of acreage. This map gives a little more detail. So this is the the two temporary work area easements we're seeking within the Clay Avenue Wash Reach. These are both located on one property. It's a property that's being redeveloped right now with a hotel on Malapie. And the two red boxes are indicating where those easements would be located. And then this is at the other end of the project at the Rio de Flag lower reach. Again, the red is indicating some temporary easements that we need during construction. And that's what I have for you this evening on this item. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Counsel? Ms. Whelan?
Dan, I just wanted to thank you for showing the properties. It really helps to get a visual of what you're talking about. And I just wanted to thank you. I appreciate you forwarding those to us.
You're very welcome.
Counsel, if there's no more discussion, is there a motion?
Mayor, I move to read Resolution Number 2020-46 by title only.
That would be 2020-38. Is that correct, Ms. Whelan?
Why, yes, Mayor, it is. I'm reading Resolution 2020-38 by title only.
Is there a second?
Salas, second.
There's been a motion made by Ms. Whelan, a second by Ms. Salas, to read Resolution Number 2020-38 by title only. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you.
A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council authorizing the acquisition of real property interests necessary for the Rio de Flag flood control project, a public use, providing for delegation of authority, condemnation authority, prior approval of purchases, and establishing an effective date.
Is there a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2020-38?
I move to adopt.
Is there a second? There's been a motion made by Mr. Jodagart and a second by Ms. Whelan to adopt Resolution Number 2020-38. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. We're now down to 10E. This is consideration adoption of Ordinance Number 2020-20. An ordinance of the Flagstaff City Council authorizing the acquisition of approximately .082 acres of real property located at 424 East Butler Avenue, Coconino County Assessor Parcel Number 104-01-023 for the Lone Tree Overpass Project, providing the delegation of authority and establishing an effective date. Staff's recommended action at this council meeting is that we read Ordinance Number 2020-20 by title only for the first time. Staff?
Thank you, Mayor. Dan Fulk again. This is also a property-related issue. This one is tied to the Lone Tree Overpass, which is an exciting capital project that the voters approved with Proposition 420. And so we're starting the process here. You're going to be seeing an RSOQ to get a design consultant on board soon. We were contacted by the property owner at 424 Butler, which is located here on this map. It would be the northwest corner of the intersection of Butler and Lone Tree and Colorado Street to the north. And so it is this small residential lot right on the corner. It's about 3,500 square feet, 35 by 100. And so in order to for staff to begin a negotiation, we have council authorize the purchase through an ordinance. And so the plan is to have you do the first reading tonight. Should you approve it, we'll have an appraisal done over this break, bring back the second reading at your first meeting in August. By then, hopefully, we'll have an appraisal ordered and then we'll begin negotiation with the property owner on acquisition. And this is a full acquisition again for the construction of the Lone Tree Overpass, which we hope to have a ribbon cutting in 2026. Be happy to answer any questions for you.
Any questions, Counsel? Is there a motion?
Mayor?
Sorry.
That's okay.
I saw the Vice Mayor.
Okay, Vice Mayor.
Mayor, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, I'd like to make a motion. I'm actually trying to get to the right tab. I apologize. Counselor Whelan, why don't you make the motion?
Okay, I'll see if I can do this. So it is Read Ordinance 2020-19?
No. 2020. 2020-20 by title only.
Okay. To read Ordinance 2020 by title only for the first time.
Vice Mayor, so there's been a motion to read Ordinance Number 2020-20 by title only for the first time. Further discussion, Mr. Fulk?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to mention that once we negotiate a sale agreement with the property owner, we bring that back to council. So city council will actually see the sale agreement once the negotiation is completed and then you approve the purchase through that agreement. So that would be coming at a later date.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? All those in...
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you.
An ordinance of the Flagstaff City Council authorizing the acquisition of approximately .082 acres of real property located at 424 East Butler Avenue, Coconino County Assessor Parcel Number 104-01-023 for the Lone Tree Overpass Project, providing for delegation of authority and establishing an effective date.
Just to remind counsel as well as the general public who is listening to this meeting, that it would be council's intention at our August 18, 2020 city council meeting to read Ordinance Number 2020-20 by title only for the final time, and then to adopt Ordinance Number 2020-20. Thank you. We're now down to item number 10F. This is consideration adoption of Ordinance Number 2020-19. This is an ordinance of the Flagstaff City Council authorizing the abandonment of a parking easement across real property located along the west side of Woodlands Village Boulevard, north of McConnell Drive, in exchange for a Flagstaff urban trail system easement, delegating authority, approving forms, and establishing an effective date. Staff's recommended action at this meeting is that we read Ordinance Number 2020-19 by title only for the first time. Mr. Fulk?
Actually, I believe Martin Intz is going to be presenting this item tonight.
Seriously? I was so proud. Okay, Mr. Intz.
I am. Thank you, your honor, members of the council. This is Martin Intz. I'm the multimodal transportation planner for the City of Flagstaff. And the ordinance before you authorizes two real estate actions. The first is abandonment of an existing parking easement in which the city has an interest. And the second action is recording a foots trail for a future trail connection. Both of these easements are located on what's shown in this map is parcel 1D at the northwest corner of Woodlands Village Boulevard in McConnell. That site is currently vacant, but a veterinary clinic has been proposed for it, and it's currently going through the planning process to get approval. Sometime back in the mid 90s, parking easement was recorded across the parcel. That parking easement is shown in blue, in the blue hatch. It was recorded for the benefit of the parcels to the south in the green and specifically for a proposed shopping center development, presumably for either additional parking or overflow parking. That development was built, but the parking on the easement never was. So the parking remains, the easement remains vacant with no parking on it. A couple of years later, in 2000, the city was deeded the two dark green parcels shown here as 21F and 21G for a future park site. And when we obtained those parcels, we also obtained an interest in that in that parking easement as well. Back to current times, the owner of 1D has asked the city to abandon that easement so they can move forward with construction of the vet clinic on it. And it's probably worth pointing out that some of the other parcels shown here in light green have already abandoned their interest in the parking easement. City staff has taken a look at that easement to see if there's any potential benefit for the future park and really have identified none. So there doesn't seem to be any detriment to abandoning it. In exchange for the abandonment, the property owner would dedicate a foots easement along the west side of the parcel that's shown as this narrow purple stripe. That easement would allow a future trail connection to Mountain Trail Apartments, which are located up here, these dark buildings, and allow a trail connection down to the commercial center as well as to McConnell. In fact, if you look at the site now, you'll see that people from Mountain Trail are already cutting across 1D to get presumably to this commercial area as well as to any campus. When the vet clinic goes in, of course, their way will be obstructed. So a future trail will allow them to continue that access. That concludes my presentation on this item, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
If there's no further questions, is there a motion?
Yes, Mayor.
Ms. Whelan?
I move to read Ordinance Number 2020-19 by title only for the first time.
Is there a second?
Second, Salas.
There's been a motion made by Ms. Whelan with a second by Ms. Salas. Further discussion, starting with Mr. McCarthy?
Martin, I see that that easement doesn't go all the way through where the parking easement was. Is that because that's property belongs to a different person? Yeah, see, the purple hatch doesn't go all the way up. So are we going to be able to get a connection through, I guess, what's called 1C? Or will that be negotiated sometime in the future?
Counsel member McCarthy, your honor, members of the council, yes, 1C and 1B are owned by a different owner. The action before you does not abandon the parking easement on those parcels. At some point in the future, when those parcels are proposed for development, we'll consider abandoning the parking easement and getting the foots to extend through it as part of the development process.
So at this point, we're giving up the parking easement on 1D, but not on 1C?
That's correct.
All right. Thank you. I'm supportive.
Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you.
An ordinance of the Flagstaff City Council authorizing abandonment of a parking easement across real property located along the west side of Woodlands Village Boulevard, north of McConnell Drive, in exchange for a Flagstaff urban trail system easement, delegating authority, approving forms, and establishing an effective date.
Just to remind counsel as well as everyone who is listening to this meeting, that at council's August 18, 2020 city council meeting, it would be the city council's intention to read Ordinance Number 2020-19 by title only for the final time, and then to adopt Ordinance Number 2020-19. We're now down to 10G. This is consideration adoption of Resolution Number 2020-47, a resolution approving Amendment Three to the lease agreement between the City of Flagstaff and Theatricos. Staff's recommended action is that we read Resolution Number 2020-47 by title only and then adopt.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Counsel, this is Greg Clifton. I'd like to kick this off, if I may, and then I will invite Kevin Fissell, who's really been handling this behind the scenes, to join in. I wanted to start by thanking Kevin for his handling of this matter. It's a simple one. It's a one-page memo in your packet. What is in front of you, Counsel, is an amendment to an existing lease. That amendment specifically being the inclusion of a force majeure clause, which is Latin, because apparently attorneys like to use Latin clauses. And this would basically, well, I'll back up and explain, these clauses speak to, well, I might quiz counsel and see if anybody knows the definition of force majeure without looking it up on Google, Vice Mayor.
Yes, I do. This is Counsel Member Salas.
Please go ahead.
So basically, force majeure is when contracted parties are relieved of their responsibilities stipulated in the contract, when there's tragedies, calamities, natural disasters, you know, like events that are not anticipated happen.
That was perfect. Thank you so much. And Mayor, thanks for allowing me to go off script, as exactly what it is, counsel member, and thank you. And a clause like this certainly would apply to a natural crisis or disaster such as a pandemic. And that is, of course, what we're dealing with here. And similar to a discussion the council had some time ago with respect to some leasehold interests out at the airport, there was a stated desire by council to forgive or abate, if you will, some rent payments for some time in consideration of the hardships that are now being experienced by the pandemic, notably with the Theatricos facility, a complete stop of business and hence revenues. To frame the discussion also, Theatricos does pay a monthly rent that's a little bit closer to market rate than some of the other community service arrangements out there that operate by city-owned property subject to leasehold interest. So this, to allow for any abatement of rent, which has been requested by the tenant, we need to put our house in order and first amend the lease to include this clause. This matter has been discussed by email with the tenant of the property. He's wholly in favor of this happening. Should council agree and approve this resolution, our intent administratively would be to implement a six-month rate abatement, which would take us to the end of the year. A safe assumption here being that Theatricos will at least have experienced a six-month loss in revenues during this pandemic. With that as a backdrop, and again, with with your indulgence of my little pop quiz there, I would... I would like to ask if Kevin Fissell would like to weigh in with any additional comments.
Yeah, thank you, Greg. I really don't have anything to add. I think you covered everything there. I guess the only other thing I'll point out, and Greg sort of inferred this, is that the city manager can invoke the, or approve the invocation of the force majeure clause up to a six-month period, and any time after that would have to come back to council. So we built that in for administrative approval. But other than that, I think Greg covered everything.
Thank you. And actually, Kevin Fissell did the legwork on this. I'm just speaking to it. I'm very grateful for all the efforts. With that, Madam Mayor, counsel, I'm glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. Odegaard has a question.
No question, Mayor. I just wanted to comment. I just wanted to say that I'm 100% for this. As was stated, in a pandemic with COVID, it makes sense to do this. Theatricos is a community asset, just like Boys and Girls Club is a community asset. And so it makes sense to do this. So, thank you.
So is that a motion?
Yes, Mayor.
Is there a second?
Yes.
There's been a motion made by Mr. Odegaard and a second by Mr. Aslan to read resolution number 2020-47 by title only. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you.
A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council approving amendment three to lease agreement between the city of Flagstaff and Theatricos, Inc.
Is there a motion to adopt resolution number 2020-47?
It's almost there.
So moved. Second.
There was a motion to adopt resolution number 2020-47 by Mr. Aslan and a second by Ms. Whelan. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're now down to our discussion items. This is section number 11 of our agenda. We have a discussion item, A, which has to do with our Indigenous Commission, our committee, we're going to determine that, I think, tonight, and then our youth commission and our committee. I believe we're going to start with our Indigenous Committee, our commission, and that is Ms. Tohi. Is that correct?
Yes, Madam Mayor. This is Rose. I'm going to have Claire share my slides for me. So tonight, we're going to present the Indigenous Commission or Committee for council discussion. Next, please. Again, yudkla greetings, Mayor Evans and council members. First, I'd like to go ahead and do the land acknowledgement, as I usually do. It is recognized that the city of Flagstaff is built on sacred lands loved and respected by the Indigenous people since time immemorial. The Indigenous Commission have known and inhabited these areas before Flagstaff was incorporated in 1928. Flagstaff City Council has further recognized in its proclamation for Indigenous Peoples' Day that it was built and is still being shaped today with Indigenous people's knowledge, labor, technology, science, philosophy, arts, and commerce. My clans's are Tchechino Dye, which is red streak running into the water, born from Kinlecheetni, the Red House Clan. My maternal grandfathers are Ashihi, the Salt Clan, and my paternal grandfathers are Hachan Zoe, which is yucca strong, yucca fruit strung together. I am a Dino woman and Indigenous child of the land, and my lineage comes from the Navajo and Ute nations. Again, my name is Rose Tohi. I'm coordinator for Indigenous Initiatives. Next, please. So this is going to be our quick outline of what we're going to be presenting tonight, what I'll be presenting tonight, the Indigenous Commission background, what is a commission versus committees, and a third option for your discussion, the pros and cons, conclusion and questions, and then counsel direction. Next. So the background on this, when it came into discussion, was late 2017 and with the city manager's office brought up the Indigenous Community Coalition at that time. And then in 2018, ICF started meetings with Mayor Evans and then had discussions on the Indigenous Commission. And then May 2020, council recommended it as priority item, as a priority item, and then in, right now, we've combined research efforts with city staff, and we're presenting this to council with your options, things to discuss and consider. Next. So the background discussion is really, some of the things that have come up was consideration for now and in the future. And then ICF, as well as the city, talked about what it would be the best fit for the city and the Indigenous community, and then also the timeframe on future council agendas regarding this subject. And then we also talked about the consistency on the community interface and engagement, meaning what is this commission or committee going to be responsible for, how it's going to be responsible, and have that community accountability and city accountability. Next. So these are the basic differences between the commission and committee. The commission, of course, requires an ordinance, and participants must reside in city limits. Whereas committee, there's no ordinance required, and participants don't need to reside within city limits. And then there is open meeting laws where a commission is subject to that and committee is not. The council appoints a council liaison for the commission, and then the council, participation is discretionary under a committee. So, and then the council has, the commission has direct involvement and authority in decision-making. And then the other one, the committee, has recommendations made on a more unofficial basis to the council. So those are the very basic requirements as far as the differences in these two scenarios. Next. So there's a third option that we had also talked about, or at least I did, with the city manager, with Jessica Drum, and also with Sterling. So one of the things is, there's, from the community side, Indigenous community side, there's a need and a want for not just city participation, but the greater county participation. And one of the easiest ways that we thought this could happen was through an MOU, memorandum of understanding with intertribal advisory council, which is enforced through the Coconino County. And like I said, I talked to Sterling, and I had his legal input on this, and it looks like it's workable. The MOU will spell out the involvement of the members that's outside of city boundaries, and they will act as ex-official members regarding the commission, because there'll be a commission group. And then, next. So some of the pros and cons regarding this is that the commission will have official involvement in city decision-making as far as things that affect Indigenous community. And then the commission also requires that it be a formal council involvement. So there's that relationship, there's that, it's a little bit more formal and a lot more strengthened. And then the committee, on the other side, is more inclusive, where members can be brought in from the outside of city boundaries. And then input is possible that way on a committee, but it's very unofficial. And then, of course, the work plan and with community input, both of them can look similar with either of these structures, whether it be a commission or a committee. Okay, next. So in conclusion, the Indigenous group has three options. One of them is the commission, just the regular with city residents, sorry about that. And that's my phone. Hold on. Have another one. Hold on, I'm so sorry. All these phones. And then the third, and then, well, let's start again, with the commission, which is just with city residents, and then the committee, which has input from the outside city boundaries, and then a commission with an MOU specifically with intertribal advisory council through the Board of Supervisors. And then all these options will involve community engagement, community participation, and also, it will also need council recommendations. So this is, what we need is the direction from council, mayor and council. Should the Indigenous group be structured as a committee, commission, or as a third option with an MOU? Thank you.
I'm going to go to our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Mayor, and Mayor and council, and thank you, Rose, for the presentation. I do want to chime in to mention that it is a workable solution with that MOU in the sense that any members that are not within the city of Flagstaff but through the, you know, general outlying county areas would be ex-official, non-voting members.
Right.
Just wanted to state that clarification, but thank you. And all of it is workable, however you want to move forward, counsel.
Thank you, Sterling.
I'm going to go to Mr. Aslan, because I believe he has legal questions.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I do have legal questions, and I think it might be best to hold on to them until we're in executive session. I'd like to recommend that we go into E-session.
This is Charlie, I second.
Was that a motion from council member Aslan?
Yes. Yes, please.
Okay.
There's a motion made by council member Aslan, there's a second by council member Odegaard. Vice Mayor, did you have something that was specific to this? Or do you have a comment that could wait till we come back in the general session?
It can wait. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. There's been a motion, a second, to go in the E-session on this topic. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Okay, so city clerk, Ms. Selsberg, would we then leave this meeting and you would give us a call?
Yes, we will take a break from this meeting, and then I will call you each individually to connect to E-session.
So we should exit this meeting, is that correct?
That is correct. You'll need to exit this meeting so that you can enter into another meeting, and then you'll come back into this meeting once executive session is concluded.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stacey.
Are we streaming again?
We are back on live stream.
Okay.
I forgot to re-join the meeting.
So just as a reminder, everybody, we are here discussing item number 11A, specifically the Indigenous Commission/Committee conversation. And so we're going to turn it back over to counsel. Counsel was discussing this before we went into E-session. There are no comment cards on this, is that correct?
That is correct, Mayor.
So counsel, at this time, we need to give direction.
Can we get the screen back up that shows us the various choices?
Ms. Tohi, can you please put that screen back up?
Mayor, can I make a comment?
Please go ahead.
Sorry for not using the chat bar, but since I was here. Well, you know, and I'll keep this brief. I would prefer that we move forward with the commission with an MOU. I think that's the strongest footing forward for the Indigenous community that lives in and around Flagstaff, and I think that provides them the most valuable means for input and participation in important decisions that the city faces regarding their issues.
I'm going to go to Ms. Whelan.
Mayor, city council, I would need to agree with council member Aslan. I do believe that it would be the strongest voices to get everyone together. So thank you.
Okay, Ms. Salas.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with the third option, with the commission, constituting a commission with an MOU with the counties intertribal advisory council. And also specifying the authority and scope of work of both the commission and the MOU will be set in the parameters toward implementing the Indigenous Initiative work plan as presented by our Indigenous coordinator on May 26, 2020, specifically with regard to the Indigenous Community Cultural Center, economic inclusion and impact, visibility, education, public safety, wellness, housing, and transportation.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I too am in favor of a commission with an MOU, and I support what council member Salas mentioned just now. Thank you.
Ms. Whelan?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just wondering, I really truly believe that the commission should have the autonomy of, again, recommending what it would like to tackle and discuss, of course, with council approval. But I really think it does need to come from the people rather than us saying this, this, and this. So just something to think about.
Okay, I believe that Ms. Salas probably has a response to that. So I'm going to go to Ms. Salas, then I'm going to go to Mr. Odegaard.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The reason why I'm trying to set the parameters of the commission and MOU is focus. Because we have a full-time Indigenous coordinator who put a lot of work in putting together the work plan, and that work plan was already developed with members of our Indigenous communities and their leaders, and we approved the work plan. So, and we have always embraced, you know, diversity of thoughts and discussion, but also keeping in mind that our goals- and, but also keeping in mind that, uh, our goals are set in the work plan, so, um, so just, uh, it's, it's just a matter of, uh, focusing our energies on the work plan rather than entertaining, um, or veering away from it. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're gonna go to Mr. Odegaard, followed by Mr. McCarthy.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, I agree with Ms. Salas, um, concerning that it be a commission with a MOU and also, uh, following, you know, the work plan that's been developed and stay focused. I just want to make sure, uh, this commission is very diverse. Um, I've talked about this, uh, concerning B-PAC, uh, beautification, that it needs to be a very diverse, uh, commission. You know, we have many tribes in northern Arizona. We've visited them, uh, since the four years I've been on council, visiting with their leadership, whether it's the Walla Pae recently, or the Havasu Pae, the Hopi, and Navajo. And then there's also other tribes that we have not been able to meet with their leadership as of yet. So, uh, that's my concern, I just want to make sure it's a diverse commission and that it's focused, so thank you.
We're gonna go to Ms. McCarthy.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I, I believe the best way to do it would be a city commission. It's not completely clear to me how several of the council members are, do they want a city commission, or do they want a commission with a, uh, that basically works on the county commission, with the county commission? I'm thinking we should have our own commission and would be interested in the clarification by the other council members of where their head is at, no respect that, whatever it is. Um, I think this commission should start with the work plan, but I don't think they should be strictly limited to that. If there's other issues that they want to bring up, like any other commission, they should be able to work on any issues that it's appropriate for that commission. Obviously, there'll be rules that they cannot get in the middle of things where we're in court. But other than that limitation, I think they should be able to talk about anything. Um, I agree with Mr. Odegaard that we need representation from, uh, a, a larger cross-section of different tribes as possible, Dine, Hopi, and whoever else we can get involved. Those are my comments, thank you.
So just by way of clarification, Ms. McCarthy, I believe that so far, all the council members who have spoken have spoken about a commission with an MOU. That would be, um, a, um, a commission that includes individuals, um, that are from the county's commission. Ms. Tohe, do you want to clarify that?
Yes, of course, thank you, um, Mayor Evans. The intertribal advisory council, uh, is established through the county, Coconino County, and they are an advisory council to the Board of Supervisors. And they, it, they bring a lot of things, a lot of issues that different community members bring to them, and they, and they elevate it up to, to the Board of Supervisors. So then the Board of Supervisors are aware of whatever, um, the situations are regarding Indigenous people who reside in Coconino County. And, um, so they try to have representation from all the different districts. And so this would be kind of a complimentary fit into what the commission would be through the city. The only difference would be that ITAC will be able to bring, I guess it's like having more ears out there, um, in the county and bringing that recommendation or those, um, suggestions to the commission, because a lot of our people do come that will utilize all the different things within the city that are within the strategic plan and in the work plan. And so this is where they'll be able to complement each other and be able to work together to have more, more issues covered and more resolutions made regarding the work plan and, and going forward. So we can always establish, what I'm thinking is, um, we can always establish this MOU. And we can also put in there that if for some reason it doesn't be, it doesn't seem to be working, we can always have a sunset for, for that MOU, or a renewal, whatever it may be. So that's another thing to present as well.
Okay, I, I understand that, and I read about it in the packet. Um, I just wanted to make sure when the other council members mentioned an MOU, this was the MOU they meant, as opposed to setting up a city-only commission and just having a memo of understanding about what it would do or not. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. So I guess I, I am a little bit confused. Um, I was envisioning that we'd have a, a city commission that would work in partnership and that was also expanded through the county interior tribal advisory council. But I think what I'm coming to understand now is that, you know, this MOU idea is more so just us kind of piggybacking with the county intertribal advisory council, is that correct, Rose?
Uh, you're correct in the first part, that we would be a partnership.
Okay, so we would basically be adding things to their county agenda for that, that, that council, correct?
No, we, they would be adding to us.
Okay, so they would basically, um, would they meet like through, like, city hall and, and through our portals?
That would be, that would be what I would think would be happening when they, if they, when we do this MOU, they will be meeting through, however commissions meet.
Okay, and then...
Vice Mayor, hold on a quick, we're gonna go to Mr. Clinton, then we'll come back. Mr. Clinton?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council. Again, just to clarify, and, uh, this is just, uh, what has been discussed thus far internally. But, uh, to answer the Vice Mayor's question, this would function very much like a city commission. It would be subject to, uh, the same sort of meeting protocol and meeting schedule. Uh, and at some point will resume in city hall. Uh, until then, virtually, but it would, it would not be a situation where ITAC would just be uh, asked to handle city business on an already existing county agenda. They would be functioning for two separate jurisdictions. Uh, we simply would be partnering and utilizing a commission that already exists. Um, so some assumptions go into that. Uh, one assumption is that, uh, that the good members of ITAC would be willing to take on uh, that extra work, uh, and that remains to be seen, but I just wanted to clarify your question, thank you.
Does that help, Vice Mayor?
That does, and I guess my, my follow-up question is, I don't, I'm not familiar with how the ITAC is set up in terms of, as council member, other council members have mentioned, the, um, diversity. And so I guess as long as we, we do that through the overlay in the, in the lens of the diversity that we're looking to build in our commission, I'm all in favor of that, and I think that that does allow for that greater, uh, inclusion. And then I just wanted to mention there that, um, okay, with, like, having the guidelines of the strategic plan to support this commission, but as other council members have, had mentioned, I too was struggling with us limiting their scope. Um, I do like the idea of, of having some clarity on their plan and, and their work plan, at least to get them going, but I do think that they should also have the ability to weave other topics and points of interest that they come up with into their, their work plan and scope. Um, so maybe kind of like a hybrid model, just kind of like this whole MOU thing is as well. Thank you, hopefully that's clear.
We'll go to, um, to the city attorney.
I ju, I just wanted to comment, thank you, Mayor and Council. I, I wanted to make sure you heard something that Rose mentioned. Um, the MOU, uh, would likely contain a clause, uh, mentioning that if, if this isn't working out for some reason or another, there would be an off-ramp, maybe not a sunset, or maybe a sunset, I don't know, but there would be a, a potential off-ramp for that if, if things were not working.
We're gonna go to Ms. Odegaard.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, since this will be more of a commission, as a city commission, then we will get, when this commission gets started, uh, we will get, uh, recommendations that'll be, um, advanced to the council of who would want to serve on this commission, and then the council body will, uh, pick and choose those members to serve on this commission. Just want that to be clarified.
Ms. Tohe?
Yes, uh, right now, we will, thank you, Mayor, uh, and Councilman Odegaard. This, right now, the way we're, we're just seeking direction right now. And, um, from what you decide, then, um, the process will be started as to how that, um, vetting will, will happen. And then how applicants, if, if it should be, require applications, then that will be part of the process.
Just to put a finer point on that, Ms. Tohe, I believe that Councilmember, um, Odegaard is asking very specifically that once direction is given, we, will we be able to go out and then recruit individuals to sit on this commission? Um, and then will those individuals come back to council for final appointment?
Yes.
Ms. Odegaard?
Uh, yeah, and that, and that's, I like that clarification, and, and I like that process. Just so there's some, uh, formality to it. Um, you know, commissions, uh, do, yes, they're autonomous, but they also serve, um, the interests of the council goals and et cetera. And so, um, I like that process, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, I believe all council members have weighed in. Um, I believe that Ms., um, Ms. Whelan, Mr. Aslan, and the Vice Mayor are interested in the option that has to do with a MOU, a commission with an MOU. And they're not interested in putting parameters unnecessarily on what that tho, that commission are, what the MOU looks at. City Attorney, did you have a comment? City Attorney? Mr. Solomon?
Sorry, I had an issue there with the mute button, and it was not, uh, not unmuting, I've had some of that today. Anyway, I appreciate that, Mayor, Council. I just want to make sure that we're clear, this is still a city commission. And it's still a city commission that council members appoint the commissioners onto the commission. Uh, that said, the MOU would be structured in a way that only members of the ITAC commission could be considered through the MOU for appointment by members of our city, by our city council, to be members of the city commission. Is that, does that make sense to everyone? I'd want to make sure that's clear.
It makes sense to me, I just need for a council to, uh, make sure that they understand that. I see Ms. Whelan has a comment.
Thank you, Mayor. Just quickly, um, you know, I'm willing, I understand the logic with, with the focus that Councilmember Salas mentioned, uh, so I'm definitely willing to go with that. I know we can change it at any time, should we need to.
Okay, I'm gonna go back because I need for, um, the city attorney, um, to restate what you just stated, um, because there is still somewhat confusion. So, uh, City Attorney, if you could please restate that, um, and then I can check to make sure that council understands what you just said.
Sure. I want to make sure everyone is clear that this is a city commission. City council appoints the members of this commission. If city council wants to include some people who are not within the city of Flagstaff, who are on the ITAC, they can through an MOU, but they would be ex officio non-voting members. But it would not just be anyone, it has to be someone who is already on ITAC. Uh, it's the city's commission, and the city can draw from that pool of who's on ITAC. That would be the MOU that allows, you know, the, the cooperation between the city's commission and ITAC. Uh, is that clear for everyone?
Vice Mayor, do you have any other questions? Okay, I think it's clear.
Yep, we're good.
Okay, so in understanding that, uh, Mr. McCarthy is interested in just a city commission, I believe. We did have three individuals that were interested in a commission, uh, with an MOU that was very specific to ITAC. However, um, Ms. Whelan is, um, interested in, um, Ms. Salas's original statement. I too am interested in that. It looks like council's majority is interested in a commission with an MOU. Um, that MOU would be written specifically with ITAC, and it would be, uh, narrowed in scope to moving forward the, um, strategic plan that council has adopted and that our current Indigenous liaison is working on. That seems to be council's direction. City Manager, is that what you have?
Yes, Mayor, and I think we just received some clarity, um, at the risk of prolonging, and I just think it's going to be important, uh, as, as we put together the pieces to this during your council recess, does the council want to give us some direction as to how big you would like to see this commission? Or, uh, are we at a point where we can just go to work, put together the, the things that you have given us direction on, and report back when you adjourn from your recess?
Council, do you have any ideas how big you would like this commission to be?
I say go to work.
Go to work? Is all council agreeing with that?
I second that.
Mayor?
Ms. Odegaard?
Yeah, uh, I, I say go to work and, and basically follow the guidelines as, as our other city commissions. There is a, a limit, but let's go to work and get going. Thank you.
Does that help, City, um, City Manager?
We're gonna go to work.
Okay, we're gonna move on and have a conversation about a youth commission committee. Um, I believe that Mr., Vice Mayor, do you have a question?
Yeah, I apologize, Mayor, I, I hate to hold us up on this topic, but I just wanted to add one more comment, and then I'll, I'll leave it there. Um, I just wanted to say, you know, I, I fully support the majority's decision in keeping the focus on the, on the plan. I just want to mention that, you know, we've talked a lot about inclusion, inclusion and diversity on this commission. And, and I, I just want to mention that, you know, in creating the plan, I don't know if every tribe was at the table, right? I think that we could have maybe done a better job of being more inclusive in that process as well, although we did try. Um, so I just wanted to mention that, so I just wanted to make sure that we, we were conscious of that as we kind of narrow the scope of this commission. Um, but obviously, we can always make adjustments later. Thank you, Mayor.
I guess I just have a follow-up to that, um, Vice Mayor, because I want to be very clear. You know, council was not the, um, community organization that actually was leading that particular movement. Um, and so I just want to make sure that the public understands that it was not council, um, that was not being more inclusive in that particular, um, um, case. And that I think council has been very clear with this conversation and the numerous discussions that we've had, that we would like to have the city commission, when it is set, be as inclusive as we can possibly get it. Okay, we're gonna move on to the conversation about the youth commission and committee. Who's leading that effort, this discussion?
Um, that would be me, Mayor. Um, hi, I'm, I'm Claire Hardy.
Okay, I didn't recognize your voice, I apologize.
Oh, that's okay, this is my first time, uh, presenting, so. Let's see. And I hope that y'all are able to see my screen, okay? So, um, hello, everybody, um, my name is Claire Hardy, and I'm a data collection specialist in the City Manager's office. The purpose of this presentation is to ask for direction on whether a proposed youth group should be structured as a commission or a committee, um, so that we can proceed with the necessary planning. So this presentation is going to begin with a background into the topic. Then I'll explain, um, how the differences between committees and commissions would impact a youth group, and discuss the pros and cons of each. Lastly, there'll be an opportunity to ask any questions you might have before providing your direction. So a little background information, the city of Flagstaff, um, did previously have a youth commission. It was established through an ordinance in 1991, but was repealed in 2009 due to a lack of participation. Some challenges in the past were that the commission term was for a full year instead of a school year, so students still had to participate over their summer breaks. It was also a big commitment for students who had other... It was also a big commitment for students who had other extracurricular activities, family obligations, um, or after-school jobs. And historically, the group was composed of 11 participants, ages 12 to 18, from junior high schools and high schools in the city. Um, as you know, commissions require a quorum and it was difficult for these large groups of young participants to achieve a majority. The topic has since been revisited in council meetings three times over the last two years after a future agenda item request was made by Councilmember Odegaard in 2018. Some questions and concerns raised during these meetings were, how can the group be as inclusive as possible so that all students have the same opportunity to participate? How will the group provide meaningful leadership and civic involvement experiences for participants? What is the level of time, commitment and resources that would be required from city council and staff? And, um, who will be responsible for overseeing it? And how can community partners be involved? I'll be addressing these considerations, um, in subsequent slides of my presentation. So, um, Rose already covered this information in her presentation, so I'm just going to focus on, um, the differences between commissions and committees as they relate to, um, this youth group. Um, but as a refresher, commissions require an ordinance to establish them. They are subject to open meeting law, which means that minutes must be taken and available to the public and only those who live within Flagstaff city limits can serve on one. Those who serve on commissions can officially give input on any items council requests directions on, whereas a committee doesn't require an ordinance, is open to those who live outside city limits and, um, any input that is given to council would be on a more unofficial basis. Finally, the council would need to appoint a council liaison to a commission, um, but not to a committee. The frequency and depth of council participation on a committee would be up to council discretion. So when we compare these two structures, we can see some clear pros and cons. Um, both models will provide the opportunity to interact with local government, report to council, get involved with their community, um, and benefit, and for youth to benefit from leadership opportunities. But if council is looking for direct official input from youth on youth issues, then a commission would best allow for that opportunity. However, if council is most concerned about inclusion and access, then a committee would address these concerns. Students who attend school and Flagstaff but live outs, but live, um, outside city limits would still be able to participate in a committee. Um, both models will, would require significant council and staff involvement. However, a committee does have the potential to be less demanding on both student and council schedules because it doesn't require, uh, formal monthly meetings of minutes and a council liaison wouldn't need to be formally appointed to serve on it, um, or attend those meetings. I also want to note that the agenda, um, the work plan and any activities and the community partner involvement could look the same regardless of the structure. And, um, as this item progresses, uh, staff in the City Manager's Office, uh, can help figure out the logistics of either choice. We can provide information and examples to help you make determinations on things like the term limits, age of participants, activities, cost estimates, the application and selection process, drafting an ordinance, ordinance if needed, um, in future discussions. But today, we're just trying to decide if it should be a, uh, or, or what we need direction on is whether it should be a commission or a committee. So, to review, the previous Flagstaff Youth Commission was repealed due to a lack of participation in the inability of youth participants to reach a majority. Since revisiting the topic, council has raised some important considerations, such as the time and resources required of city council and city staff, as well as student participation issues. As discussed, both commissions and committee can provide opportunities for participants to have leadership experience and exposure to local government. The pro of a commission is that students could be directly involved in decision-making on youth issues, but it would require a council person to be appointed to it, which means more of a commitment and oversight from council. A pro of a committee is that all students who attend school and Flagstaff, regardless of whether or not they live within city limits, um, would be able to participate in a quorum when it need to be reached. A committee could also potentially be more accommodating to council and student schedules. So now I'd like to, uh, turn this over to council, um, but the City Manager's Office requires is some direction on whether this group be structured as a committee or a commission. Um, thank you all for your time and are there any questions I could answer for you?
Council, are there any questions specifically to the presentation? If not, I'd like to go ahead and take the public comment before council has comment. Okay, Ms. Salzberg, can we go ahead and hear our public comment, please?
Yes, Mayor, just one moment. Okay, Mayor, uh, this is Austin Kerr and he will begin now.
Hi there, uh, my name is Austin Kerr. Uh, I'm calling, uh, to say, as a social studies teacher in town, uh, and someone who encourages students to play an active role in their community, I fully endorse having a youth commission or committee for our kids. The state of Arizona has a similar type of board for kids and they advise the state only on all things education, but I think having a commission for youth here in town will allow kids to participate, uh, and focus on more than just education, which is obviously very important, uh, for them, but on all other types of local, uh, policies and politics and how that works here. So I'm excited for the prospects of this commission, uh, and I hope that you and council seriously consider letting the youth be a part of decision-making in our city. Thank you so much.
Ms. Salzberg, do we have any more public comment?
Mayor, we do not at this time.
Okay, um, council, um, we need direction on this item. Um, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor, I'll start us off. Um, I am in full support of us moving forward with a commission at the city level. I think the more, um, serious we take this effort, the, the better the experience opportunity that there will be for the youth. I think that if we work with community partners, the, the school system, uh, the Kinnaman Dormitory, we can really get a nice range of different perspectives and youth leaders in our, in this commission. And I'm very excited to see this move forward. I think this will be a great opportunity for members of our youth and I am grateful to staff for them bringing it forward to us today and tonight and to Councilmember Odegaard especially. Thank you.
Councilmember Odegaard?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mayor, um, and thank you, Vice Mayor. I'm a little bit torn, um, to go either way on this. Um, as we did hear from the speaker, um, he wanted the voice of our youth, uh, to be taken, um, I guess lifted higher, um, to us as a council body, so, you know, that would lean towards a commission. I understand there, there could be some, a little problematic with the commission as we've just seen from the presentation. Uh, thank you, Claire. So, I'm gonna wait until I hear from the other members and then I'll weigh in, uh, which way I'd go for sure, so thank you.
Mr. Aslan?
Thank you, yeah, um, I would be supportive of either option, but I will tell you that I highly prioritize, um, and prefer going the commission route. I understand the hesitancy around the, the work that that might create, especially among city staff. I do think that you get what you pay for, um, when you talk about this in terms of the amount of investment we make. Uh, I have many years of experience with youth development principles from my days as a community organizer in inner-city Sacramento and I have firsthand knowledge of how challenging it can be to employ young people, um, in endeavors like this. I, I think the biggest challenge, uh, uh, the biggest unique challenge to something like this is that our young people grow up. Um, and so, the, this investment is one that is, um, outsourced to the rest of the world and we're left needing to, uh, continuously reinvest in a new crop of young leaders. But, uh, if we're going to do this at all, I think we need to provide our young people with meaningful opportunities for legitimate leadership. This shouldn't be just a token sort of exercise. Um, it should have, uh, the, 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 the same standing as our other commissions in terms of their ability to, um, persuade and influence council in the directions that it takes. And I also think that this youth commission has a particularly, would have a particularly unique ability to provide a new perspective to the city, a perspective that the city is lacking, um, not because we don't care, but just because, uh, most of us are, I'll speak for myself, are two decades out from being a, a young person and, uh, every generation has their own sensibility anyway, so we need these perspectives. We need to be hearing from the youth who are dedicated to fulfilling this role. And I guess my, my other bit of advice is that if we do do a commission, um, we need to make sure that we have someone on city staff that has experience with youth development, uh, principles and has maybe even had experience implementing young people in leadership and managerial roles, uh, in, in either the, or both the private and public sector. Uh, I, I think it's, it's, it's a particular can of worms and, uh, you need to have someone with a particular set of skills, uh, to implement this, but the benefits to the city, um, will be, uh, profound if we're able to, to pull this off and allow our young people in town to be heard. And I do think that the commission option, um, is far superior to the committee option in those regards.
Ms. McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I believe the, uh, like Mr. Aslan, I could support either one, but I think the commission option is better. The other thing I might mention is, based on some of the problems we had before, we may have to have, uh, some special considerations. For instance, maybe we wouldn't have this commission meet during the summer, maybe it would only be during the school year. Uh, but anyway, I do support the commission regardless of the details. Thank you.
Ms. Salas is followed by Ms. Wieland. Ms. Salas?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I pressed the wrong button and left the meeting. Oh, goodness, uh. Thanks to technology, um, well, first of all, I'd like to say thank you to, uh, Mr. Odegaard for, for, um, sponsoring this as a fair item. And I reverberate Councilmember Aslan's, um, eloquently articulated perspective and I shared that. And, uh, so I would go for a commission, you know, uh, mindful of the lessons learned in 2009, why the, the former commi, youth commission was, uh, deactivated, so, you know, things like lack of participation, term length, uh, student schedules and quorums, but I, I strongly believe this is, this is, uh, this is, uh, um, a profound, um, avenue for youth development and involvement and inclusion in our city leadership. Thank you.
Ms. Wieland?
Thank you, Mayor. So I'd like to propose maybe something outside of the box. Uh, I've been on the Executive Leadership Council of Strongers One for, oh, two years now. Um, after year one, we found that we needed to have a new hire and that was Erica Shaw, um, just because of, of coordinating and, and creating interest, uh, in the council. Now, it's, it's different, it, it has more to do with mental health and first aid, but it is about empowering youth. Um, so as I think about that and after teaching most of my life with, with older youth, um, I, I would like to propose that we, we look at perhaps getting together, um, on a more informal basis, uh, maybe six times, uh, a year and having summers off, but proposing with a smaller group of very interested, highly motivated youth that would either be in a mentorship program with council members. I know, Mayor, you do this regularly and, and many of us on council have done this because youth are interested. So I, I'm, I'm thinking rather than this structured committee or commission, um, we could, uh, form it in another way where it wouldn't be so, uh, staff-intensive, uh, council member-intensive, uh, and maybe share the responsibility, have two council members a year head up and facilitate this group and then switch out in the next year. So, um, just a lot of ideas floating around in my head. Um, and, and, you know, I think before we add another commission on, we need to look at our 25 that we have and see how many are functioning, you know, just what's going on with them. So, I know it's a lot of thoughts, but those are mine. Thank you.
Um, Mr. Odegaard, you wanted to wait until everybody weighed in? Um, I want to go ahead and weigh in at this moment and say that, um, I do believe that there is a value, um, in a commission. Um, in understanding that we have, uh, several other commissions and I do think we need to look at our commissions and figure out, are they functioning at the level they need to function at? Um, as Councilmember Wieland mentioned, um, I ran a youth group for over 20 years, um, and we focused on civic responsibility and leadership. I think that's extremely important, um, um, to instill in youth at a young age. What I have to say about this commission, I just really want council to overstand me when I say this, and I use the word overstand me when I say this very deliberately, is that any commission that is set up for youth needs to be, um, diverse, um, in nature. Um, I think that the original, um, youth commission that was set up, um, was not as diverse as it, it should have been or could have been. I think that when we look at setting up a youth commission, we need to be mindful that there are some kids that have to work after school, so they may or may not be able to come on certain days. I do think that it's very important for us to understand that they may not be able to meet during the summer because those youth might be working to help take care of their families. I think that we need to make sure that, um, the, our population, um, is well-represented, um, on this commission. And so that means kids that are Indigenous, that means kids that are, um, possibly DACA students or Dreamers, that means kids that are going to be Black and everything else need to be a part of this commission, LGBTQIA+ and whatnot. I think that if we are going to set up a commission and that we are asking, um, our young people to help shape policy moving us forward, then all of the young people that are here need to be a part of this commission and their voice needs to be heard. I do think that there is merit in looking at what Ms. Wieland is saying, is that perhaps we set up, and I'm gonna take even a hybrid approach to that, perhaps we set up a commission and maybe they do focus groups, um, with other youth in our community to make sure that we actually have the totality of youth voices, as much diversity as possible. Um, and maybe they do, they do that over the school year and maybe there's some work that some of them can do during the, the summertime that puts that into like a strategic plan or strategy for council to look at. But I really want to strongly, strongly suggest that this commission not be pulled from the who's who, um, in leadership at certain schools, but rather that we go out and we make sure that we have all the kids, even the ones that are quiet leaders, but perhaps are not part of certain, um, clubs and groups at school because they actually have to work after school. So those are my comments on this.
And Mayor? I'll, I'll follow up. Uh, thank you, Mayor, uh, for mentioning about diversity, um, couldn't agree more. Uh, we need to reach out to all kids here in Flagstaff, whether they're in the school system, not in the school system, et cetera, et cetera, because as I envision, every commission it needs to be, needs to be diverse, no question. Um, so, um- So I'm in favor of the commission. Actually, I was kind of hoping the commission, so this voices of our youth will be raised to a higher level that we as a council body take action. I will challenge my colleagues that this is going to take effort on all of our part. I know Vice Mayor, you have a particular bond with youth and always try to lift up youth in our community and other communities. Yes, this started with my as a fair, but it needs to continue on beyond me. I may or may not be here after this year. And so it'll be a challenge of my colleagues that it will be here is to continue on the mantle of the voice of our youth. And so, and as far as the size, I just give direction, maybe, you know, try to keep it a little more simpler. We have a, a structure of our, of our current commissions bodies. And so, and maybe as a follow through of that, maybe it was a little bit of a challenge having 11 members on a previous commission. I, I don't think that's going to be a challenge. I see so many youth today that are so engaged. You know, we saw CATS that brought us T-21 as an ordinance for the City of Flagstaff. So the youth are out there, they want to participate. And, and I'm looking forward to what's going to come about it. So thank you.
So City Manager, do you feel? I got the Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to say, I, I support what Councilmember Odegaard said. And I also am open to what Councilmember Whelan said about more of a mentorship program where we kind of each, you know, we can talk about this later. But, but I do think we should set up a commission, but that maybe we should take it upon ourselves as council members to kind of be leaders and almost like big brothers, big sisters to these individuals and, and coaching them and working with them and, and teaching them and empowering them and helping bring out the leaders in them. So I'm, I'm interested in both. Thank you, Mayor.
City Manager, do you feel like you have direction?
I do, and thank you, Madam Mayor and Council for a thoughtful discussion. There are some takeaways. I'll share my notes with staff when we debrief, but I think we have pretty good direction. And thank you.
Okay, awesome. So we're going to continue on with our agenda. We're now down to B, which is a follow up discussion, partial lane and partial alley closures in downtown Flagstaff.
Madam Mayor, I'll be glad to kick this one off, but it's going to be a collaborative discussion. I think, pardon me, that we have Terry Medex with us and perhaps her consultants attending remotely. I'll start by noting that we had a good discussion of this last week. You had a presentation in front of you. You may very well see some of that again tonight, I'm not sure. But, but please just go back to last week and, and the discussion we had. We had maps, we had some photos provided by the consultant out of Golden, Chaney. And since that time, we have put together a team at the staff level. I am not going to name names. I will say that it's a very inclusive team that represents many divisions within the city. And I think we have a good assemblage of people at the table. That team is also inclusive of Terry with the DBA. And, and we've, we've been honored by having her consultants, both of them, at the table as well. Our first meeting was this morning. Our second meeting is tomorrow morning, and I think we'll be meeting every day as we go forward. This, of course, this idea is on a fast track. I think the idea tonight is just to touch base with council, kind of further the discussion a bit. I did want to impress upon you that there's, there's traction. We're, we're moving forward. I'm happy to report that Andy Bertelson will be leading this team. He's the right person for the, for the job because of his involvement with Public Works. Public Works will be integrated closely with the things that are going on. The last thing I'll mention, and then I'll invite Terry to jump in and perhaps others, is that we're very excited about this at the staff level. While we are rolling up our sleeves and starting to get into the minutia and the, the many, many issues that, that come about in these discussions, there is a very strong underlying support for this. And I don't want to lose track of that excitement. So if it's not always evident when we're chatting about this, rest assured, we're, we're on board with this at the staff level. Mayor, may I ask if Terry's online with us? And if so, if she would like to speak?
Yes, definitely.
Well, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. Thank you so much, City Manager, for that introduction. And, you know, it really is nice to hear the support and enthusiasm coming from my partners at the city. I left last week's council meeting very energized, hearing the support, your enthusiastic support. And so to hear that echoed from the City Manager and, and on behalf of city staff is very reassuring. I look forward to working with our consultants, Chaney and JJ. Both are on the line tonight. They will be lending their experience. And I think now we know what we want to do. And I think what we'll be working on over the next few days is how are we going to do it? And I think we will lean heavily on JJ and Chaney for their experience and how they've done this in other communities. I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel. We just need to find the right fit and the right avenue for Flagstaff. And so while we're having these conversations with city staff, I have been out talking with businesses. And as I expected, the support from the businesses is really, it, it's very present. And businesses now are saying that they're, since there is traction with the city, they want to participate in these conversations. There is more need now than ever before for us to have expanded space, both for public health, but also for our businesses. So there's a lot of interest, not just from city leadership, but also from the business community. We just need to now make it happen. Thank you for giving me time to comment.
Okay, so our, Mr. Clifton, what exactly did you need from council tonight?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's just a continued discussion. We're, we're still a little bit informal. I would invite either JJ and/or Chaney to offer any comments or, and presentations that they would like to share. I would also like to invite, if I may, Andy Bertelson, the, the team leader to, to speak on this. Andy, if you have any thoughts?
Yeah, Greg, thank you. This is Andy Bertelson, Public Works Director. Appreciate the opportunity to say a few things. And, and Terry and I had a really good conversation today and really focused on, okay, we have the ideas and what will work for Flagstaff. And so over the course of the next three days, our team will be meeting with Terry and the consultants and talk about how we can implement some of these measures to benefit our downtown and benefit our businesses and partner with the Downtown Business, Business Alliance and the City of Flagstaff to implement those measures on behalf of our community. And so, like I had said, we had a good kickoff meeting today. Following that meeting, Terry and I had a lengthy conversation and just look forward to rolling our sleeves up tomorrow and meeting as a team and, and moving the ball forward. So thank you for the opportunity to speak, Greg.
Yeah, thank you, Andy. Mayor, I might ask if either JJ and/or Chaney, pardon me, Chaney would, pardon me again, would like to speak on this briefly?
Thank you, Greg. Thank you, Greg. This is JJ Folsom from Puma. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
The project manager for the consultant team. Just wanted to say a couple of words. I too am really excited about this opportunity for Flagstaff. Chaney will talk in a moment that we've been working throughout Colorado and many, many cities from all sizes to, to small towns in the mountains, all the way down to the metro area in Denver, have been doing this. And we've, we've learned a lot of lessons that we can bring to Flagstaff. And we are very confident that we'll be able to create some incredible outdoor dining and shared expanded public space in Flagstaff. Thank you, Greg, and, and Council.
Okay, so in understanding that, Council, do you have anything to add with the, to the discussion? Or are you happy with the way things are going? I don't see anyone that's wanting to add to the discussion at this time. So we'll go ahead and move on. We are, we are now down. Ms. Whelan? Ms. Whelan, did you have a comment?
Yes, Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you to everyone. And I'm really happy to hear that this is going to be an expedited process because as you know, our, our downtown is going through some changes. So the sooner the better. Thank you.
Ms. Salas?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thanks to staff and the Downtown Business Alliance and Puma. You have my support in making this happen. And thanks for the update. That was, that is summarized in, in the staff report when it comes to possible permits required with respect to liquor licenses, safety considerations and park flag operations. So let's make it happen. Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other comments. So thank you very much. We're going to go ahead and move on. We're now down to item number 12. This is council liaison reports. This would be reports from council to council. It has to do with the commissions that you set on, on behalf of council. Are there any such reports tonight? Vice Mayor?
Mayor, I don't have much to report on. I just wanted to mention that the CJCC Group, the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council Group that I sit apart on, a part of, a part in, is meeting tomorrow for the first time since COVID began, I believe it is. And I'm very much looking forward to that discussion and that meeting and to work with that team on a lot of the topics that the community is really asking us to work on. And so just wanted to mention that for all of the council and for the community and that we also have our alliance meeting this Friday, which is with the FUSD, NAU, CCC in the county, along with the city. And so I'm glad to see both of those efforts continuing. That's all, thank you.
And I would just follow up and say, Vice Mayor, that I appreciate you taking the lead on that commission for me. Previously, Councilmember Whelan sat on CJCC on behalf of my office as well. And I think it's very important that, you know, as we go forward and when we talk about the work that the CJCC is doing, you know, in saying that they are just starting to look at topics that our community has brought up and interested in is not exactly correct at all. You know, CJCC has been spending years looking at and working on the different issues that the community, community has brought to us as of late. And many of the programs and services that we currently have as a community, such as some, some of our drug court, mental health court, veterans court, and things like that are actually projects, projects that came out of CJCC. So I think it's very important that we make sure that we talk about the history of what CJCC is doing, as well as everything else that they are currently working on.
Mayor, 100%. And if I came off like this is all new for us, I apologize. No, this group has been meeting for seven years and has been working on some great stuff up and, up until COVID really kind of hit us and knocked us off track. But it seems like we're definitely have the curve and we have all the key players at the table and the buy-ins there and the community partners are there. And it's, it's been one of the better efforts and groups I have sat on since being an elected official. And I'm very proud of the work we're doing and look forward to the work ahead.
Thank you so much. I don't see any other council members who have indicated they have a report for this section. So we're going to move down to item number 13. This is future agenda item request. We do have one. This is a 13A. This is a future agenda item request. This is a citizen's petition requesting that the council review and reform our Flagstaff Police Department's use of force policies, funding allocations and community engagement policies. Ms. Salzberg, you've indicated that there is someone here, the petitioner, who is able to speak on this particular petition. And then I'm going to ask Legal to let council know what our options are with regards to this petition.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I do have Audrey Cruz. She is the individual who submitted the petition. And she is actually on the team meeting and is prepared to offer a three minute public comment when you're ready.
Ms. Cruz, can you please go ahead?
Thank you. Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor and City Councilors. My name is Audrey Cruz and I'm here to hopefully discuss our citizen's petition regarding the Flagstaff's, Flagstaff Police's use of force policies, funding allocation and community engagement. I understand that being reactionary and rushing into changes regarding our city's budgets and policies in the face of the national outrage around systemic racism is not something we should expect from you and with good reason. I appreciate the mayor's statement in particular during the June 8th inclusion statement video about wanting to take a long game approach to this issue and to seek information from a wide array of organizations, groups, and especially people of color who are disproportionately affected by systemic racism. Today, I'm asking you to take further concrete steps to commit to examining how our police department interacts with the public and in particular interacts with Black, Indigenous and people of color community members. Today, I'd like to hear from you all what steps you're committed to taking to move Flagstaff to a more equitable community. I'm requesting a thorough discussion of police policies be part of a future agenda. I'd like to see a citizen centric commission or committee developed to discuss what's been happening in the past, what steps are happening now to eradicate racial bias in the police force and to set ambitious targets for the future of our city's police department, including its funding outlook. We all know that the police department is not a singular entity at the root of the inequity we see. There are racist and prejudiced ideas baked into policies at the local, state and federal levels. And we can and must work collaboratively with all departments of the city, our social services, the hospitals, the homeless shelters, the mental health services and many others to address the inequity in a durable and consistent way. This is a thorny and complicated issue to tackle. But just as the climate crisis is an emergency, our city's inequity is also an emergency. And I'd like to see you all address it with the same thoughtfulness and support. The intersectionality of the roots of many of these inequity issues means that if we work together across sectors, organizations, businesses, institutions and community groups, I have the utmost faith that we can be a model town for how people are treated justly, no matter their race, ethnicity, wealth or background. Thanks so much, and I look forward to any questions you might have. During this, we'll direct you to the letter I submitted along with the petition that outlines my other concerns. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Cruz. City Attorney, can you please clarify with council what exactly council can do with this citizen's petition?
So Mayor, Council, with respect to the citizen's petition, as with all citizen petitions when they come onto the agenda and less than until we have, Council indicate that they want to move the matter forward for further discussion. We don't research and, and put together additional information or an executive session. But if Council indicates that there is interest in moving forward with that, that's when we would weigh in on that.
Okay. So Council? I see, I'm going to go first to City Manager, then I'm going to go to Mr. McCarthy and then the Vice Mayor.
I will be brief, and it's a little bit of a procedural comment, Mayor. Thank you. I just want to remind Council, at first I want to thank the petitioner for the narrative and all the efforts that I've gone into this. I just want to also remind Council that we have a fair item that is council initiated and it's in the queue. And it will be before you when you return from recess in August. And it will be before you when you return from recess in August. It is very parallel to the petition that has just been introduced with one or two finer differences. I think the issue of funding is not included in the council fair item. So I just want the council to be mindful that there is yet another item that closely resembles this that's coming your way. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
McCarthy?
Well, thank you, Mayor. And I submitted a fair about a month ago. And I would like to read it and then make a brief comment after I read it. So what I submitted is, based on my knowledge of the Flagstaff Police Department, as a private citizen and as a councilperson, I believe that we have an excellent police department. Mistakes are made, but our police managers do not let problems sit under the rug. My experience is that problems are addressed. It is my duty, however, as a council member, to make sure that we always live up to a high ideal. Accordingly, as a first step, I would like the police department to make a presentation to council on their policies and procedures regarding racial profiling, de-escalation training, and the use of force. I would like to know if we have any rules on the various types of chokeholds. I would also like to know how complaints of inappropriate action are handled. I would like to know if we have procedures to prevent hiring officers that took inappropriate actions in other police departments. Other council members have suggested that we create a public safety commission that would make recommendations to council regarding public safety issues. I would like to include that idea in my request, at least as a point of discussion. I would like to hear from our police department if they have recommendations regarding procedures recently evolving in other cities where other professionals, for instance, paramedics, councilors, etc., respond to calls that do not involve possible violence and do not require an armed officer. I do not make this request as an accusation, but as an appropriate response to ensure that the problems we have seen across the nation will never happen in Flagstaff. So that's the end of my request. My follow-up comment is that the Assistant City Manager sent something out to us yesterday, and I did have a chance to read that material. And so I have this follow-up comment. After my recent study of the Flagstaff police policies, I see that most, if not all, of the community questions are addressed in policy already. I think it would be good to have the community discussion so that our police department can show the community what they are doing. And then the last thing I'm gonna say is a quote from President Barack Obama. It says, "When any part of the American family does not feel like it is being treated fairly, that is a problem for all of us." Thank you, Mayor.
I'm going to go then to the Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. And Audrey, thank you for your work on this and being with us this evening. And to all the members of the community who were part of this effort and have been speaking up and trying to implement lasting change on this topic. I just wanted to mention, you know, in addition to what Councilmember McCarthy said in regards to his fair item, we do have programs like Terrors Locally who address mental health calls in partnership with our PD, and I'm looking into furthering that effort and that partnership to improve upon that. And I also am interested in the commission topic and also alternative housing models like North Native American Connections that is currently taking place down in Phoenix and around the Phoenix area and much more. But I look forward to the discussion. I'm gonna be voting no on this fair item just because I feel comfortable with the one that Councilmember McCarthy has requested, and I hope that that is brought to an agenda with council support. Thank you, Mayor.
I'm going to go to Ms. Whelan.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. And I certainly appreciate you bringing this citizen's petition forward. Just a few thoughts. I do believe that it's time for council to look at the totality of Black Lives Matter. We, the Flagstaff City Council, are being asked to respond. We are being asked to set the stage for a difficult but long overdue conversation that that I support. I truly believe that together in this conversation, we are stronger. Councilmember McCarthy brought up a fair item that takes into consideration everything that our petition has asked us to do except for funding. And I'd like to just take a minute to address that. We really have an amazing opportunity to work together. We have two council members that initiated fairs and we have given administration direction. I believe we have a way not only to discuss what we need to do, but a way those changes in those changes might need review, revision, and funded. We have the priority-based budgeting, a tool that aligns spending. We have the opportunity to gain community consensus and our overarching priorities. Then, once that consensus is reached, the council will be able to align spending on community programs that are truly Flagstaff's priority. So the answer to the question of how do we do that? Some have asked for a formation. Jim, you've mentioned a public safety commission, other ideas of civilian review board. I think we can absolutely come together. But the community is asking, what are we doing now? And I heard our city manager talk about that when we get back from our break, we will be able to really dive into that agenda item. I'm excited to do that. In the meantime, I know that I and several other council members have been reaching out to different groups to figure out what their wants, what their voice, what their needs are. So perhaps during our break, we can commit to that, and I look forward to our decision and our conversation. So with that in mind, if Councilmember McCarthy, if there's some way we could get funding into your fair, I would, I think that's the answer, and I would say no to the citizen's petition only full well knowing that we will have this conversation. Thank you.
Councilmember Asland?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for, to the public, for bringing this forward. I don't have a lot to add that hasn't already been said, but I don't want my lack of comment tonight to be construed as a lack of interest in the topic or to be construed as a lack of concern. Really, what I have to do is echo what's already been said. I think moving forward with Mr. McCarthy's fair item is the appropriate course of action right now. Although I'd be happy to revisit any citizen petitions that come in the future that seek to close the gaps that they're finding if there seems to be inadequate progress occurring. You know, I have my own fair item moving forward, I believe, on this subject matter in general. And just one thing I wanted to say is that Councilmember Whelan mentioned that several council members are out talking with the public, I'm one of them. And I understand that there's some hesitancy in trusting the council with these important grave matters of urgent concern. And I totally appreciate that. The only thing I can really do is, in hindsight, have acted with my actions and not my words. And my pledge tonight is that I will definitely endeavor to do that. I think what we're seeing out in the community is a sense of there's a window. We have a window here. It's an open window, and we should seize it. And I think we need to, but I understand that the community doesn't trust that we're capable of taking that ball and rolling with it. And so I just, I just, all I can do is pledge my support to making sure that this happens, that we see true and meaningful reform within the way that we budget law enforcement and with the way that our police department moves forward, taking the best from its past and moving forward with great new ideas for its future. And, you know, this is a conversation that's gonna be happening in multiple levels. I think we have several balls in the air. And some of those balls are more are higher up in the air than others. And I think it's legitimate for some of these conversations to hit the ground running, you know, from the starting line, while acknowledging that there's things that need to happen on all of these various tracks. And once we see that movement happening, I am confident that a community-wide conversation can begin where we start to synergize the problems and the concerns that we're each facing together and come up with some solutions that work, that overlap and work for all. It is a drawn-out process necessarily because, you know, we're being asked to be involved and we want to be involved as city officials. We do have certain parameters we need to work in. And it seems like sometimes things move more slowly than they do in other realms. And I also think that that is appropriate at times. And the reason that those procedures are put in place are because they've been abused in the past, and we can take those protocols and move forward and make meaningful change and do it right instead of just quickly. And at the end of the day, really, it comes down to a matter of trust. Does the public trust this council body and the next one to lift up these challenges and stay in front of them? And my commitment, I can only speak for myself, really, I suppose, although I think this is reflected with the rest of council, in my personal opinion, is that we're not gonna let this one go. We recognize the moment of opportunity, and we're going to seize it to the extent that the public hopes that we will. And I think we're gonna see some meaningful, long-term, systemic, and sustainable progress from all that. Thank you.
And with that, I don't see any other comments from council. And so it does not look like there'll be any action taken tonight at this time. We're gonna go ahead and move now. Oh, okay. I see Councilmember Odegaard.
Yes, Mayor. I was in the lineup. But as my kids always done, they always forget me too. But, you know, I don't think there's anything more to say. I think it's been all well said already. I wanna thank the Vice Mayor becoming a more informed council member body on the council when you learned what PD does and concerning social services. I really appreciate that, Vice Mayor. You know, I'm looking forward to those community conversations. We've attached dollars to have those community conversations. So as far as the petition, I wanna thank the member of the public and those that took the effort to bring it forward. And I'm hoping as we have those community conversations go forward, they will be participatory in those conversations. So thank you, Mayor.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yeah, I just want to say that although we may not technically move this item forward that came from the public, we really are moving it forward because the agenda item request that I submitted about a month ago will be coming to council. And hopefully, we'll get enough votes to have the discussion. So the substance of what's been requested is going to be moved forward. Thank you.
I will follow up on that, Mr. McCarthy, because I think it's very important. I'm not sure how we relay information, but there's a perception that council is not doing anything. And I do think that that is a perception that is false. Council has actually done many things with regards to this subject. And I don't know if there's a better way that we can articulate what it is that we're doing. You know, council gave direction that we work with a local group to have a meaningful conversation about the Live Black Experience here in the city. You did submit your request that council will be listening to and hearing. Council, more than a year ago, talked about priority-based budgeting. And a few weeks ago, talked about the fact that we are getting ready to start on that journey, which will include numerous conversations with the community about what budgets are for, what our priorities are for our budget. So council has actually done a lot. But I do think it goes back to what Mr. Asland mentioned, is that it's a trust factor and it's a belief factor. And I think that we can say what we're doing. We can put it on Facebook. We can send out a press release. But really, it's going to be just our actions and us continuing with our actions moving forward in a deliberate, meaningful manner that includes all voices. That will be the proof that council is actually taking this seriously and is actually doing things. Ms. Whelan?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm wondering, could we take action right now to expedite Councilmember McCarthy's fair item, meaning that we not go through the process of three, then four, you know what I'm saying? But right now, take a vote that we would like that expedited and that the full item should be ready for discussion in August when we come back?
I think that's a clerk question, a legal question, and a city manager question. I'm gonna go to the clerk first, followed by Mr. Clifton.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to clarify that we wouldn't be able to take direction on that tonight simply because it's just not on the agenda for conversation. At the next, it is scheduled to come before the council on August 18th. If we do receive the three in support of moving it forward, at that time, we can ask or a member of council can ask that it be expedited. And if four members of council are in agreement with expediting that conversation, we can certainly get it in the queue much quicker than our schedule is set out right now.
Thank you. I would hope that we could be prepared for that to happen.
Mr. Clifton, were you going to tell us that as well?
Yeah, I think Stacy said it better than I could. So, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any other conversation on this tonight. Council is not taking action, and we are moving on to the next item. And the next item would be item number 14. This is our city manager's report, 14AI. This is the city manager's budget memo.
Thank you, Mayor. I will not belabor what's in my report, the usual divisional updates. I hope it's of interest. I did call out for discussion the budget, the manager's budget message. I sent that to you this afternoon, but it occurred to me that our city clerk actually sent that to you via an amended agenda yesterday. So I think what you have in your packet is what you should have in your packet. And if I can And if I can indulge your attention for a bit, I would like to scroll through this document. A lot of work went into this, and I'm hopeful that council finds it of very high interest and very useful. With that said, Stacy, I think I would like to take control of this screen, if I may.
You sure can.
Thank you. I first need to get, okay, thank you very much. Council, this is not a PowerPoint, nor is it, it's a PDF, and it's about 13 pages. If it's okay with you, I would like to scroll through this and just touch on a few things as I'm scrolling. I apologize in advance, scrolling through documents is not fun when you're looking at them on a computer screen. But if you would bear with me, I'll try to go through this kind of gently and not in a way that's going to make you dizzy. This is the manager's budget message. What this is, is a document that kind of summarizes it in a comprehensive way. It gives you, gives us all a snapshot of where we are and where we're going. The budget, as we all know, is much more than just numbers and spreadsheets and, and percentages. It's, it is a comprehensive statement. A lot of work goes into it. The purpose of this message is to summarize. It's almost like an executive summary. So, when you open up our budget document, and I have to give major props to Heidi Derryberry and the budget team, who have been working very hard to put together the budget document. This is near the front end of that document, and it's kind of the quick read. If somebody wanted to have a snapshot of what's going on in Flagstaff and where the city is going, they can refer to this. The same topics that I'll be touching on here, we have been touching on in the many, many, many presentations that we've had with, with our team at Stiefel, as we're getting ready to issue our certificates of participation. A good part of that, those discussions is talking about our city and what's happening. So, with that as a backdrop, it starts out with a transmittal letter. It speaks to the traditional budgeting methodology, and then segues into what council was just talking about, and that is priority-based budgeting and what lies ahead. So, thank you for that nice segue into this component. And compliments to Sarah Langley and others, Shane Dilly, for contributing to the priority-based budgeting piece. And there's a lot of work that lies ahead, of course, and we look forward to that. As we continue down, and you're seeing some of this for the first time, I'm sorry, my screen is flashing every time I move it, and I apologize for that. You're seeing the community, the key community priorities that were identified last fall, last September, when we started this process. Very important. In your budget document in its entirety, you'll see all the objectives broken down here. They're just summarized here. What we're also seeing then, and bear with me, I'm sorry that this is like flashing in front of you here, you're also seeing the allocation of resources going into these key community priorities. Continuing on, we speak to the economic condition of the city. I'm going to scroll down to a chart, and I hope it's legible in front of you right now. That tells a very interesting story. These are the general fund sales tax revenues, which are a very good barometer of our local economy. You're looking at a line graph that goes all the way back to 2006, which is pre-recession, Great Recession. And you're seeing the, you're seeing what has happened since then. Of course, the very noticeable dip in 2009, as we were in the depth of that recession, and then a steady climb up to 2017, and then a bit of a flattening off in the last recent years. I'm not telling you anything new. We've talked about these numbers at length. I will note that in terms of 2017, and it's mentioned here in the narrative, what happened then to change things? Well, we're seeing an increase in online auto sales. We continue to see a fluctuating construction industry, but also notably in 2017 was the preemptive collection of sales tax by the state, replacing what had been local collection prior to that time. And we know from subsequent discussions, and it's even been mentioned by the Arizona Auditor General, that fewer businesses have been audited, and there was much less monitoring on the required business licenses. We're looking to backfill those omitted services locally, and I think many communities are doing that. That's not the entirety of the reason for this slight dip in 2017, but I think it lends itself to that particular trend. As we continue to scroll through this, you see how the general fund expenditures are broken up. What's notable here are labor costs, independent of pension funding, around 52%. When you add in pension, it jumps up to 69% approximately, a significant part, which is a good segue then into another discussion that we'll, we'll bring about later in the budget message. Bear with me as I scroll down. The revenue projections, that was before you recently, and I'm not going to belabor the details. It's fresh in your minds, I'm sure, council, but what you're seeing now is the, I'm going to pull this into view, bear with me, please. You're going to see the graph that Rick Tatter and his team put together with the three scenarios, and how we arrived by averaging those scenarios at the current projection of around 6.4% decline for the upcoming fiscal year. This was very important news for all who were a part of our presentations on the pension Next, and I'm not going to belabor the details of this either, but the next topic is that of the recession plan. And rather than go through a long, windy explanation of the recession plan, you have in front of you a nice graphic that we have been using that summarizes very succinctly the five stages of the plan, and some of the correlating action measures to be taken upon each stage. Of course, each stage gets incrementally more severe as the plan, as we go through the plan. We started in the moderate stage. Council advanced us into the significant stage where we currently reside, and that is predicated upon what I just mentioned to you, that 6.4% revenue decline. And all the measures you see referenced there are measures that are, in fact, in place, and so far, so good. We're watching the numbers carefully, council, and we'll, we'll continue to watch them carefully. And we think we're doing just fine in terms of the plans that we put in place and how we're responding to this economic downturn. I want to spend a couple of minutes talking about our organization. This got a little bit of airtime during the budget process, never enough. But to start the discussion, you have in front of you a, a chart, a column chart that shows number of full-time employees. That's actually full-time equivalents. That's how we measure our, our staff. So, these would be, it'd be the equivalent of full-time employees. And what you're seeing, again, going all the way back to 2006 and '07, all the way to the current, you're seeing the Great Recession that occurred, which actually occurred in 2009 and '10, and then, but then you have the, there's always a lag in terms of labor force. There was a significant reduction during the Great Recession, but the lag that occurs is what I would draw your attention to, that we actually had a very significant low point in our employment, our staffing in 2013. Since that time, we've been incrementally increasing our staffing. But at this point, in 2019, and even as we budget into the 2020-21 fiscal year, we are significantly below what we were staff-wise pre-Great Recession. Something that came your way in one of your retreats in the fall was the organizational structure, and you're looking at what has been in previous budgets, the organizational chart, a typical chart that, that you see with municipal government, local government, with this city of Flagstaff, the citizens at the top, of course, city council with its three appointments, that being the municipal judge, and the city attorney, and the city manager. And then, as you can see from this structure, there was a couple of direct reports under the manager, our previous communications manager, and then, of course, the two deputy city managers, and almost the entirety of the organization falling underneath, I'm going to zoom out a bit, and that actually might help with the scrolling here, the entirety of the organization falling underneath the two deputy city managers, that the entirety of being representing about 12 different divisions. Taking you back then to last fall, we implemented some restructuring measures in the organization. They are provided for you in bullet point here, the creation of a new senior executive assistant to help our, our mayor, and with that, adding, added to the existing executive assistant who provides services to the council, both those are employees under my office and now employees under the newly created Public Affairs Office. We did not backfill the senior management analyst. We tried to make this as budget-neutral as possible. Then more recently, we did move the sustainability section under the city manager's office. That was a very prudent move, and also subject of a citizen initiative, if council recalls. We moved the city clerk under my office as a direct report, the same comment with respect to the Economic Vitality Division. And then, the last thing we've done, or one of the last things we did, was we elevated the Information Technology Section back to a division. What does that look like in a new organizational chart? It looks like this, and this is very purposefully different than the more conventional organizational chart that you just saw. What's different about it? Well, one is the Flagstaff community noted at the top is prevalent, and there are faces to it, and there should be, and we always need to be reminded who we serve. The city council off to the side, and then the three appointments, the presiding magistrate, and under that magistrate, our court administrator, of course, our esteemed city attorney and his entire team. And then, under my position, you now see numerous additional direct reports. That was very much by design, sustainability, public affairs, city clerk, and the two DCMs. And then, the rest of the organization looks a little bit the same. But what is different, and what the reason that we utilize this kind of chart, is we wanted to depict, one, a little more horizontal inclusion of our employees, all the section heads, all the division heads, a very fluid, if you will, integration where we work together and share information in a very collaborative way that is strongly founded upon teamwork and problem-solving very collectively within the organization. I cannot impress upon you how often this is now in play, but I'll go back to a previous discussion from this evening on the downtown right-of-way enhancement or expansion project. That team is comprised of many, many sections and divisions. We have many teams like that now within the city's structure, and I, I think they are operating quite well. So, I think this is more than just a chart. It is a depiction of how the organization is functioning. Enough said on that. I hope you do give this a careful read and find this of interest. I'm nearing the end, if you'll bear with, with me, a little bit more. Also, in the budget message, we, of course, address current and emerging issues and updates, and topping that list now would be COVID-19, which came upon us in a powerful way in March. I make note that the city of Flagstaff was one of the first local governments in Arizona to issue a state of emergency and start imposing restrictions. There's a little bit of narrative here as to what's been going on, but more importantly, some recent stats as to how we're faring in Coconino County, and then also bringing it back to a local level, our reentry plan. And by the way, you're going to end up with a quick discussion of that this evening right before we adjourn. At the helm of that reentry team, another team, of course, is Shannon Anderson. She's been doing a great job with this. You've had a lot of presentations on this. I think it's a very well-thought-out plan. Then we segue into what might, in my opinion, be one of the more important topics of this year and what's happening now in the new fiscal year, and that is the unfunded, the public safety pension unfunded liability, the PSPRS. Mr. McCarthy, that stands for Public Safety Personnel Retirement System. And everything that you see in this section, you have seen before. It's been before you in numerous presentations. But again, this is deliberately written to be able to tell a story to anybody who wants to pick up this document and find out what's happening in the city. So, we included a lot of graphics to go with the narrative. On the public pension liability funding, and we've been having meetings on this just about every day, it's all good news of late. Today, we recorded a presentation that is going out with a preliminary offering on the issuance, so we are, we're going viral with this thing, I guess. At any rate, you see in the graphic in front of you where we currently stand in terms of the percentile of governments that have paid off various levels of their pension liability. So, we have a lot of room to, to, to go here, to grow, and we're doing that. We're, of course, going from a 20% to 40% funding to a 100% funding, if everything falls together as we think it is. The other graph, and you've seen this before, kind of explains why we're doing this. The reason why we're doing this is, as we look back the last 15 years, with the orange line showing our accrued liability, and the gray line in the middle showing our unfunded liability, you can quickly glean from this that we're not making a lot of ground. Now, measures have been in place. In 2019, the use tax revenues are now happening, and that will help. But I think council's action on this is well justified, just by a quick glance at this one graphic here. What lies ahead in terms of this funding of the pension is nicely depicted in this graph. The red line here tells an amazing story because it is the amortization of both our police and our fire pension, two different spikes in the graph because there's two different spikes in the respective amortization schedules. If you look closely at the numbers, you'll see when that first spike occurs in 2036, we're upwards, near $20 million of debt service in that year, and, and then it climbs again. What this tells you from a budgeting standpoint is that it's really, really hard for us to try to anticipate and plan for these surges in expenditures. Of course, we would plan for them, but it's, it's a significant constraint upon our budgeting process. What now will replace that are the blue columns, which is a nice level debt service that will be less than $10 million a year, and it'll be steady, and we can plan for it accordingly. The other important takeaway on this graph is that our amortization schedule is shortened by seven years. What does all that mean? That, that means we're saving our taxpayers approximately $65 million net present value. That is the singular takeaway in this entire pension funding story that can't be stated enough. Why are we doing it? We're saving this community $65 million. So, enough of that. It's there for your reading enjoyment. We speak a little bit about the local recovery plan. Kudos to Heidi Hansen and her team. We chat a little bit about something that we gave a lot of attention to in the budget process, which is our independent revenue streams. I will remind council of the measures currently be taken, that being taken at the airport toward this objective, the 32-acre parcel, 31.5 acres, the paid parking regiment, and of course, all of that is now augmented with the CARES funding that will greatly assist us toward making the airport a completely sustainable enterprise. A similar comment is made with respect to our watershed A similar comment is made with respect to our watershed protection and wildfire risk reduction program. I know that's mouthful, but this was before you in just recent weeks, both Nicole and Neil and others presented to you on this, where we modified our fee structure in our utility billing, which now benefits both the environment management fee, which used to be a flat fee, now is based upon consumption. I'm glad to report that I'm contributing significantly to that with the new landscaping that we're putting in. And and by the way, that we are, it's all zero scape, so we're only irrigating heavily in the first year. The intent here is to see that, to 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 follow our water conservation objectives in the years to follow. So we have that new fee structure and then, of course, what a wonderful outcome of the the budget discussions was the new fee structure for our Flagstaff watershed protection program, that the bond for that program is expiring. So we have this new program that is now supported with the fee that council has taken action on. And then the the summary of how that translates for our residential water consumption, actually in the lower category, our users will save money. In the higher categories, they will spend a little bit more. It's all based upon consumption. I want to circle back to our employees and talk about a very important topic, which is employee retention. I would invite you to give this some attention, specific attention as you're reading through this. We did not give this a lot of airtime during the budget process. We, of course, talked about the 2% cost of living adjustment, which has been deferred pursuant to our our recession plan. But I want to show you something that you have not seen yet, which is a result of our 2019 survey. We do these surveys every two years. I wish I could show you all the previous surveys because you would see a trend, but there's an important takeaway here and it's not a very good one. And that is that compensation is now the lowest ranked of scoring by our employees. And by the way, we had 461 employees out of 888 FTEs taking this survey. So the the N on this survey is significant. It's a very good sample size. And why am I mentioning this? This is part of the emerging issues and updates because it's it's something we need to be mindful of as your city manager and as somebody who's responsible, along with all my colleagues and teammates and overseeing the entirety of our organization, we have an issue. And the issue clearly is that of declining compensation. We are losing ground to our competitors. Our compensation study, which is being performed this summer, I think will yield that out to more detail with more detail. But right now, you're seeing a graphic display of how we're ranking and it's the first time that compensation has been the lowest ranked value. And I'll share with you that since our 2017 survey, it represents a four percentage point drop. So here I am as your manager telling you as as our council, we need to address this. And I know we're in the middle of a economic downturn and a pandemic and we have our recession plan, but this cannot be ignored. We need to at least keep the dialogue alive and keep this very important issue in the forefront. Of all the things we talk about during these council meetings, it's a myriad of subjects and you and the council covers just about every potential topic that we can think of. It's an incredibly, a wonderfully diverse array of subject matters. Underlying everything with very few exceptions is the work of our employees. That's how these things happen. Council sets policies, council gives us direction, the employees make it happen. We are the implementers and this is that. Your workforce is showing you some results that you need to be mindful of and we we want to give that due attention as time marches on. The very last thing I will touch on and forgive me for being so long-winded here are the projects that are in front of us. They cannot be understated. The they cannot be overstated, pardon me. The the Rio de Flag project, of course, you have a nice narrative here. Thank you to Shane Dilly and the and the Capitol Projects Team for for these narratives. The transportation projects, of course, the Fourth Street Bridge happening as we speak and a few others. And then I conclude with the airport parking and that'll be before you, council, when you return from your recess. We will stay very busy over the next several weeks, I promise. I am going to conclude there and stop. I've taken a lot of your time, but I wanted to walk you through that. I generally do not spend this much time with my managers' reports, but I wanted to walk you through this and invite you to give it a careful read when you have time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, city manager, for for that detailed report. That was greatly appreciated and it was very well done. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. And and yes, C Manager, wow, what a great report. And you know, what kept coming through to me in this report was just, just the plans that are in place at different levels, right? From the recession to the reentry to the pension to the organizational functional chart and and just the intention that you've put behind that and your leadership and and I just, I I appreciate it. I think I think you you're doing a great job as our city manager and I feel very confident in a lot of things that we're working through because of the plans in place. And so I appreciate that. I wanted to say that, you know, I'd love to see this document and your updates like maybe more accessible on our website if possible or may and just making sure that these are going out because these are so such a great resource for the community. And lastly, just that, you know, I I think you raised a really good point about the employee retention and I'd love to see that on a future agenda as a discussion item and, you know, something that we discuss and and give an update on and talk about as a council, along with figure out how to better address this topic moving forward as well. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Manager. Oh, can I add one more thing? And then on your updates, very, very great update. I appreciate that piece. There's a lot of things you covered. I'm not going to repeat much, but I just want to mention shout out to Hal Jensen and I'm great, I'm grateful that we're doing that update on their equipment for them and also to our partners at the county with their Blitz testing. And I look forward to seeing what we can do to better support their efforts, which which they're doing well at for what they can and that. Great news on the EV charging station. And and lastly, that I was bummed to learn that I missed out on the Lions Club auction. I usually go to those and I was so bummed that I just missed it. So but thank you to the Lions Club for their support and collaboration. Thank you.
Again, thank you for that, City Manager. We're going to go ahead and move down our agenda item, our agenda. We're going to go to the next item, which is item number 15A. This is our COVID-19 updates. This is a discussion of the reentry plan and monitoring criteria. Would this be Ms. Anderson?
Yes, Mayor, I'll be doing this presentation.
Okay.
Are you ready?
Yep.
Okay. And so again, this will be the reentry plan and the monitoring criteria specifically. Today on the agenda, we'll briefly discuss the CDC guidance from the document CDC activities and initiatives supporting the COVID-19 response and the President's plan for opening up America again. We'll also be reviewing the Coconino County Health and Human Services Department weekly report. And then lastly, applying the CDC explanations to the city of Flagstaff monitoring criteria and the Coconino County Health and Human Services Department data. So our CDC guidance talks about three specific things that are incredibly helpful as we continue to monitor the transmission of COVID. First is the downward trajectory. They define it as when fewer cases are reported at the end of the 14 days compared with the number at the beginning of that 14-day period. Although they're talking about 14 days, I think these definitions can be helpful when we're applying it to our four weeks or more. The second item is a grace period. They define a grace period as five days applied during that 14-day downward trajectory. So when we see the charts that go up and down over the 14 days, they have a few higher days than than others, as long as it doesn't go beyond the five days, it's just grace period. It's when we have five days of consecutive increase when there has been a rebound. And a rebound basically means that you start your 14-day of downward trajectory over again. So when we look at the weekly report that Coconino County Health and Human Services puts out, there's three specific reports that are helpful for our monitoring criteria. The first is the weekly number of COVID-19 cases by geographic area. The second is the weekly hospital admission of confirmed cases among the residents in Coconino County. And lastly, the weekly COVID-19 deaths, again, among Coconino County residents. So as we look at these charts, the first again is the weekly number of cases by geographic area. Sorry, I will try and move that so you can actually see the full chart. So Flagstaff is the dark green number. You'll see over the last couple of weeks, we've seen an increase, 78, week ending June 20th and 161 new cases, week ending June 27th. They will be putting out a new report tomorrow, which will show the cases for the week of, it would be July 4th. The second chart that we look at on a regular basis is the weekly hospital admission. Now, this isn't done by geographical area, but we can look at it for Coconino County residents. Again, we would be looking at a downward trajectory over a four-weeker long, four weeks or more. And again, we're seeing an uptick these last couple of weeks, 13, again, week ending June 20th and 17 come the week June 27th. So we were on a downward trajectory, but again, we're seeing an increase. The weekly COVID-19 deaths, again, for Coconino County residents, has been somewhat flat. Our biggest increase was 11 back on the week of May 23rd and it's been going down since then. We did see a slight uptick the week ending June 27th. So how do we apply the CDC criteria to the data that we just discussed? Our monitoring criteria, again, includes downward trajectory of the number of cases, hospitalizations and deaths over four or more weeks. These are the numbers that we've actually been monitoring to see, is it time for us to start considering the reopening of some of the city facilities? There are other items in here, but they are, they are less, less involved as far as what we're monitoring for the numbers within our community. So if we look at downward trajectory by itself, the CDC guidance said when there are fewer cases reported at the beginning of the 14 days compared to the end. So when we look at the city of Flagstaff, what we can apply here is when there are fewer cases reported at the end of the four-week or more period compared with the beginning. So same language, just a longer period of time. The grace period, again, their guidance was five days can be applied to that 14-day downward trajectory. We could look at a grace period of two weeks. Again, would be similar because five is almost half of the 14 days. So two weeks would be half of our four-week or more downward trajectory period. Lastly, the rebound criteria, again, the CDC guidance says five days of consecutive increase is what says you basically start that downward trajectory over again. So in our situation here at the city of Flagstaff, we would be looking, if you have two weeks of consecutive increase, then again, we would start our downward trajectory period over again. So if we look at this as an example, again, this is our number of cases. We've had two weeks of increase here in Flagstaff. We went from 41 to 78 to 161. And because we've had two consecutive weeks of increase, we would be looking for the weeks that come after this 161 period for, again, our downward trajectory over four or more weeks in this example of the number of cases. And we could apply that that same methodology to the hospitalizations as well as the number of deaths. So given that example, I'd like to turn it over to council and see if there's any further discussion on the monitoring criteria and how we might apply these CDC guidance.
Mr. McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just thinking about these criteria. Let me give you two scenarios. The one, the number of cases is 10, then it goes to eight, then it goes to seven, and then it goes to six. That is certainly a downward trajectory. But let me give you another example. 210, 208, 207, 206. It's the same trajectory, but they are very different scenarios. We could have a downward trajectory at a very high level of input. So to me, just looking at the trajectory, it's going down, is only telling maybe about 5% of the story of how dangerous this situation is. Those are my thoughts.
Anything else from council? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor, and and thank you, Deputy City Manager Anderson. I think I think I like the plan, but I also hear what Councilmember McCarthy saying and I do sympathize with the way he's saying. I have a feeling the numbers are going to continue to increase locally, so I feel like we're going to continue to see those numbers rise. And so I'm not so worried about a downward trend, but I can also see, you know, at a later date, us being in a place where the numbers are just high, but yet they're leveled out and there seems to be a downward trend, but it's somewhat misleading, right, Councilmember McCarthy, to what really is going on. But that's not where we're at today, in my opinion. And so, yeah, thank you. Thank you very much. And and that's all I have to add. Thank you.
Ms. Whelan?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for this report. It it, you grabbed the data and it's clear. Comparison with the CDC was excellent. I too agree, just the way this COVID works, that once we hit a certain point, our numbers go up exponentially. So it's not just, excuse me, Mr. Bacon agrees with me. It's it's just not that steady increase, but we could get to 200 very quickly if our numbers continue to rise like they are. So I do have that concern too because, and I'm not sure what to do about that, but I would like to to make sure that we're going to take that into consideration. I I I think this report is is well done. I'm not sure that we're going to have any of these answers, but I think the report looks, looks towards our future and and at least gives us some measurable data points. So thanks for your work, I'm Ms.
Okay, anything else from council? Okay, I don't see any, so I think we'll go ahead and move on. We're now down to item number 16 of our agenda. This is informational items and reports from council staff. Future agenda item request? We will go ahead and start with the Vice Mayor tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Not a whole lot to add. I I'd like to just express gratitude to city staff and the community and to the council and to you, Mayor. You know, this being our last meeting prior to our summer break, it's going to be a while till we convene again and I'm just grateful for the work that we have. And I'm just grateful for the work that we have all done and we've all done together. And it hasn't been easy, but I feel like we've done the best that we can, and we've done a good job. So I'd like to wish everybody a nice summer without counsel. I'll miss everybody, and I also appreciate the break. And yeah, thank you, everybody.
So let's go to Mr. Aslan.
Thank you, Mayor. Looking forward to this recess. I'm sure that folks at the city are looking forward to it even more, getting their Tuesday nights back for a little while. We've got a lot of work to do. There's a lot of serious issues. There's a lot of urgent issues that we need to address. And make no mistake about it, this break, while there's going to be a little bit of downtime, just because we're not having council meetings, doesn't mean that we, as council members and certainly city staff, are slowing down at all. There's a lot of things happening out there, and we need to be moving forward diligently and with great care towards a lot of solutions that people are very eager for. And it's an honor and a privilege to be a part of that process. And I take my duty as a council member very seriously, even though I like to joke around with you guys. I hope that I hope that speaks clearly. Again, actions louder than words. And I look forward to seeing you all on the flip side. I can't wait for us to all be back in the chambers together. That may be a little while. But anyway, I don't have any other items to share. Just kind of getting a little reflective here as we think about 2020 so far and what an unanticipated ride it has been. But I am very encouraged by our city leadership, the team that we've always had in place, and our city manager, who's going to be celebrating a year on the job here pretty soon. I'm sure he didn't expect all the bumps in the road that were ahead of him. But I really appreciate your leadership, Greg. And I hope you enjoy, you and your wife, and enjoy these next couple Tuesday evenings that you have with each other as a way to catch your breath for the rest of 2020. Here we come.
Councilmember McCarthy?
Well, thank you, Mayor. I guess I want to say that I'm looking forward to a little time off and a little time to catch up on projects that I've been pushing aside because I've been so busy. And I just want to thank Team Flagstaff for doing a great job in supporting counsel and working with us. We do have a great team. So we'll see you in a few weeks. Bye.
Mr. Odegaard?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, very much. I just wanted to highlight something to the city manager that I've been finding a little problematic. We had agenda item ten B. We had a work session on that item not very long ago. And I was always told by a former city manager, Mr. Copely, that a work session is the time to hash everything out, think of all the what-ifs, and then come to a conclusion to give a direction for a vote. That will follow that shortly after the work session. Well, tonight, well, that work session that we had seemed like it was ignored when it was time for a vote. In my recollection, in the just the very near past, is that's happened to the council body now three times that I can remember. And I find that very problematic. And I'm hoping the city manager will talk about that with our team, the City of Flagstaff, when we have work sessions, when we make the big effort. Conclusion was made for a direction for a vote that will come afterwards. And then it goes smoothly. Where a voting meeting, I was told by that former city manager, Mr. Copely, was supposed to be easygoing and go smoothly. Well, our voting sessions have not worked out that way of recent. So I just want to put that out there. While we're on our summer break, I'm looking forward to two items that will come back to us as we come off a summer break. One is what the City of Sedona did at the end of last year was concerning Airbnbs, putting in our own city code of what the state allows us to do concerning Airbnbs. I know we were kind of waiting for the legislature. Obviously, the legislature has not done anything. And so it's time for us to put in our code what we are allowed to do to give our police officers and our other team members the tools they need to do concerning Airbnbs. The other thing is I'm looking forward to, hopefully soon, maybe this fall, after we get back from our break, concerning an RSOQ concerning city-owned and managed housing and finding a rental assistant demonstrator in partnership of the housing. I know this has kind of been in the works for a while. We purchased property there on Lockett and Fanning, the help with this partnership. Hopefully, we can do that. Hopefully, it gets put out there. I know the last I heard, it was in legal and to make sure the definitions were correct before it went out publicly in finding that partner concerning our city-owned and managed properties. I like to quote what Sarah Dar has shared, and it's concerning what I just spoke of. It always seems impossible until it's done. Well, that quote was done by Nelson Mandela. And I find it very appropriate because housing, it seems like it's always on the top of everyone's mind in our community. And so with that, I wish everyone have a good summer and looking forward to meeting everybody again in August. So thank you.
Ms. Salas?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a request for the city manager to allow for a discussion in the future, some updates with our neighborhood associations. You know, La Piasta Vieja, the Sunnyside and the Southside Neighborhood Association. So we've heard from, you know, we hear every now and then from those neighbors. But I'm hoping to have like a comprehensive update from from these neighborhood associations with regards to challenges and opportunities, economic vitality, you know, community vitality, you know. I just want to have that discussion pretty soon. And I am looking forward to the break. I'm going to be on a staycation, Flagstaff slash Northern Arizona. Just taking the time to rest, relax, and re-energize and come back with five hundred percent energy and commitment to serve our community. And much gratitude to every member of Team Flagstaff who individually and collectively I consider the giants whose shoulders we step step on. Thank you.
Ms. Whelan?
Yeah, I'd just like to say thank you to Team Flagstaff, leadership, the mayor, and council. I really appreciate all of you.
Thank you. Mr. Clifton, just to verify, our next meeting would be August eighteenth?
I'm going to look to our city clerk to verify. Stacy?
Yes, Mayor, our next meeting after the break will be August eighteenth.
And at this time, it will it will continue in this format unless things are drastically different when we get back.
That is correct. Yes.
Thank you. I just want to say that thank you to city staff for all of your hard work so far this our half year in getting us to council break. Thank you, council, for all the hard work that we have been doing as well to get here. This has been an interesting year so far. It seems like it took forever to get to council break, but then it seems like we got to council break quickly. The time since March seventeenth has gone by, depending on who you talk to, for a very long time, but also very quickly. We are now here at summer break. And I encourage those of us who can take a break to really take a break and get recharged. Same with city staff. I can only imagine coming back for the rest of two thousand and twenty is going to be probably just as interesting as the first part of two thousand and twenty has been. But I do believe that we, as a city organization, which would be city staff, our city leadership and council, I believe that we can do this with the help of our community. Our community has been there every step of the way with us, every day of two thousand and twenty, and they will be there when we come back. So I'd like to say thank you to all of you and have a good summer break. With that, we are adjourned.